Microphone, yeah, here we go. Okay, we can get started. Welcome to the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflanque.
Here.
Mr. Scraby Tennis is excused and absent. Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Ms. Strang.
Here.
Mr. Drescher.
Here.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Henry. All right, before we get started, just a couple announcements. I just want to let the public know that at the January tenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Town Board, that was their annual organizational meeting. Ms. Gold was appointed to a seat on the planning board, so glad to have her aboard. She's been an alternate and been on the planning board in the past, so back with us again. Mr. Drescher, sitting over there, is a new alternate that was appointed by the Town Board, and I was reappointed as your chairman for twenty-twenty-three. So I appreciate the support of the Town Board for that reappointment, and I thank them. All right, next up is minutes. We have no minutes for tonight. They're a work in progress. Laura, any updates?
Um, no, I know at the last meeting, we talked about attaching the comments under privilege of the floor. We will do that. I have no planning secretary right now. My intern's been trying to help me. He's about, I'd say, done with the December ones and a quarter of the way through last meeting. So we should have three sets of minutes for you at the next meeting.
Okay, and those will be posted online with the packet when they're ready, so everybody can see those. So you can make sure your comments are incorporated. All right, all right, and we have no public hearings tonight, so we're going to move right to privilege of the floor. Under privilege of the floor, anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town of Niskiuna, you're welcome to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we'll listen to what you have to say. Just a note that tonight, I see we've got a big crowd, and that's great. Privilege of the floor is your opportunity to speak, right? So later on, when we move into the discussion, it'll be between the applicant and the board, and the board asking questions. So this is your opportunity. Later on, we will not have dialogue with the public regarding the projects, okay? So take the time, and we'll listen to what you have to say, so thank you.
My name is Louisa Lombardo. I live at twelve forty-two Ruffner Road. I've lived in the town of Niskiuna for almost forty years. We moved to Ruffner Road in nineteen ninety-three. We were very fortunate to move in at a time when some of the original homesteaders from the nineteen fifties, when the houses were built, were still there. And we got to hear stories of the neighborhood and what it was like. Um, I heard stories, a lot of the homes are Godluski built, and he would go to the Cape, and he really tailored a lot of his homes to resemble the Capes that he saw in Cape Cod. And that's a lot of the flavor of some of the homes. Um, our neighborhood, I read the two thousand and thirteen comprehensive town plan several times, and one of the beautiful things on page twelve are the neighborhood narratives, where you go through and describe each neighborhood and what makes them unique and special to this town, and also your commitment to wanting to keep that flavor and commitment. So with that, um, I can't even imagine how this subdivision will enhance our neighborhood. When the country club disseminated letters to invite us to come to their first meeting, one of the things they wrote about is how lucky we were to have this subdivision to come to our neighborhood because it will only enhance our property values. As I have looked at each of the different proposals and the sketch proposals that have come, I only see them becoming more and more horrendous. The most recent is this plan for this little baby roundabout, which is absolutely shocking. My home is on the corner of Mountain View and on Ruffner, so my house is diagonal and across the street from the house that's going to be demolished. Um, looking at how that roundabout, you can come out of that little roundabout and go right around my circular driveway. Did I just knock this out? Um, you know, one of the beautiful aspects is that our grandchildren come and play. We use our front lawn. People will see us playing bocce balls, baseball, cornhole on our front lawn. Yeah, it's just very, very disturbing. Over the decades that we've been here, we've had block parties on our street, not necessarily since COVID. One other thing that's very upsetting is, you know, looking at, oh, you know, we're not going to impact your neighborhood at all. Looking at the sketch plans, there is an indication of a monument sign with annuals. And then this latest plan, the monument sign goes from a flat sign to now a two-sided sign, basically a billboard across the street from my house advertising this subdivision. And I have no idea who was going to go and water those annuals during dry spells.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ursula Hall. I live at thirteen ten Ruffner Road, so down past Linwood, away from the development. Um, I understand that people have the right to develop their property. I understand the benefit of keeping the Mohawk Golf Club viable so that we continue to maintain that green space. Um, I don't begrudge anyone from developing their property within the confines of the zoning code. However, I strongly object to any proposals seeking a special use permit or any more than incidental variances. Ruffner Road is an old, established neighborhood. I have not been here forty years, but I have been here seventeen years on Ruffner Road. My kids rode their tricycles and their training wheels and got pulled in wagons. Every day, there are pedestrians and dog walkers and runners, and the thought of having a roundabout where they're going to come and converge on tricycles and toddlers, that just scares me. It's just, this is a very different plan. I was invited to the meeting at the Mohawk Golf Club. I did attend in August, I believe. And this is a very, very different plan than what was proposed initially. And I don't begrudge them. I understand that they have a financial desire to keep their golf club strong, but the way they're proposing it is just unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for sharing your time with me. My name is Suzanne Mason. My husband and I bought our house at twenty-one forty-four Mountain View Avenue, where we raised our family. The nineteen fifty-five era house needed work, but we liked the double lot running behind twelve eighteen and twelve thirty Ruffner. We liked the mature trees in the neighborhood and the green spray space on the golf course, where numerous forms of wildlife flourished. Besides foxes, raccoons, and deer, the space shelters owls, hawks, turkeys, and lots of songbirds. These features contribute heavily to the desirability of a neighborhood and increase the quality of life of its residents. Low-density neighborhoods such as ours are where parents want to raise their kids. In the forty years we've lived here, we've seen green space in the town of Niskiuna diminish. Farmland along River Road, hills along the Lyschak Hill, and wild areas off of Hillside Avenue are peppered with developments that has disrupted the lives of native species. The result of this development is a decline in the amount of wildlife, except for mice, who don't have enough predators anymore, and I'm dealing with that, and an increase in traffic cutting through low-density residential neighborhoods. As members of the board, you are entrusted with the job of making decisions that will maintain or increase the quality of life of Niskiuna's residents. Decreasing green space will only diminish the quality that we still enjoy and lower the desirability of our neighborhood. If the Mohawk Club, Golf Club, isn't working out financially, maybe it should run as a public golf course. Surely, saving green space is more important than the developers' dream to cash in on unprofitable property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Carol Furman. I live at twelve sixty-nine Ruffner Road, and I'm speaking tonight about the proposed development by the Mohawk Golf Club. The site plans on today's agenda include a roundabout at the entrance of this development. I question the wisdom of putting a traffic circle only one house slot away from the intersection with Mountain View Road and Ruffner Road. It seems to me the issue of safety, safety risk, comes largely from the short distance in which to react to an unexpected car entering Ruffner Road. Eliminating a stop sign and instead allowing traffic to flow without a stop from this development adds to the problem of timing, visibility, and reaction time. Ruffner Road is, as others have said, used by many walkers, runners, and cyclists. In addition to adding traffic with the addition of cars from twenty-two new homes, a roundabout would also further degrade walkability, cycling, and running on Ruffner by narrowing and limiting the ability of cars to move over to avoid people who are on foot or on bikes. If you look at the map, it is those roundabout lanes are only twelve feet wide. It also has a greater spatial impact on the homes on both sides of Ruffner adjacent to the roundabout. I find it hard to believe the submitted traffic predictions for peak-time traffic and traffic flow predictions on alternative access roads submitted in the attachments to the agenda. I request that an independent traffic study be completed as well as an evaluation of the safety of the proposed access location. There are twenty homes on Ruffner Road between Linwood and Mountain View Road. The proposed development adds twenty-two new homes. This is the equivalent of adding an additional town street, but only adding access and egress from a cul-de-sac and doing it at an unexpected and, I think, unsafe location. If a new street was planned by the town, it would plan for new water and sewer infrastructure. This proposed development describes linking with the current at-capacity water and sewer lines on Ruffner Road. I am concerned about what this will mean for water pressure, sewer backup, and other problems, as well as the expansion of construction disruptions on Ruffner Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Shoshana Beulay. I spoke to you last meeting. I live with my husband and my thirteen-year-old son at eleven nineteen Ruffner Road, and we've been there more than ten years. Nearly all the residents of Ruffner Road oppose this project to build a high-density, or it's called average density, but compared to our neighborhood, it's a high-density, single- and multifamily housing development on the wooded wetland parcel of the Mohawk Club Golf Course adjacent to Ruffner Road. Of special significance, we draw your attention to an unnecessary plan to knock down an existing home on Ruffner to make way for a new road into the development, now a roundabout, notwithstanding the many roads into and within the property that already exist and could adequately serve any new structures permitted on the property. Before you make your decision whether to approve the plan, which decision must be based on your required statutory hard look at all the possible impacts, including environmental, traffic, health and safety, and more. We urge you to require that the club commission an independent traffic and environmental study from reputable, objective experts and engineers who have no previous connection with the club. The club, based on unbiased, financially neutral, independent expert reports, must convince you after the statutory hard look of two things. First, that the development is even possible without forbidden harm to the environment, including both wetland impact and impact to protected, threatened, or endangered species, community norms, essential neighborhood character, and health and safety. Second, that should the development itself prove to be possible after the statutory hard look at the impacts I just listed, there is no less harmful way to access club property and its new development than by destroying an existing home to cause on its neighbor's properties rather than its own significant increases in traffic, impermeable surfaces, water runoff and flood risks, drainage and water containment requirements, construction disturbance, permanent visual destruction, and road safety concerns that many others have discussed already tonight. The negative impacts that will necessarily result to our community if this development is approved are easy to understand. As many others have written and testified, such a development will absolutely change the essential character of our street and neighborhood, which historically has been a quiet road of well-maintained, widely-spaced, unique, single-family dwellings. Moreover, if approved, the drastic increase in the use of Ruffner Road as an ingress and egress point will create massive, unnecessary safety concerns for pedestrians and motorists who use that road already. Thank you for inviting us to speak to you tonight and for your time on this important matter. Do not hesitate to contact me if I can provide further information for you for your review and consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Albert Meyer. I live at eleven sixty-six Ruffner. I've been here about twenty-five years with my wife and two children who are now graduated and moved on. I've been to the last two planning board meetings, spoken at both of those. And just to review, the first meeting, we were concerned, I was concerned about the unprecedented nature of tearing down the house at twelve forty-five and putting in a new street, especially when that new street would be so close to an existing three-way stop, creating a traffic hazard, unsafe nature of the intersection. Last meeting, I spoke at length about the nature of people walking on Ruffner Road, women, babies, women pushing babies in strollers, little kids riding bicycles, people walking their dogs. During the summertime, all the grass-cutting people, the construction worker people, the pickup trucks, the mail people, all parking in the middle of the, by the side of the street, not on the, not on the grass, but on the street itself, turning a two-lane street into essentially a one-lane street as people weave their way down the street with all the pedestrian traffic that's going on. So adding these twenty-two new buildings, new residences with more traffic, it just creates an even more unsafe environment. So tonight, I'd like to dwell on the roundabout, which I thought it was a joke when I first heard it. I thought, really, I thought somebody was kidding. I, you know, I'm familiar with roundabouts. We've got a roundabout at the Rexford Bridge. We've got a roundabout on River Road. We've got roundabouts all throughout the capital district. They require pretty much space. How can you put a roundabout on a two-lane residential street in a quiet neighborhood? Just doesn't make any sense to me. So are they taking not only their residents at twelve forty-five, but are they taking property from adjoining residences? I don't, I don't understand it. And throughout this process, it's just been one thing after the other, where the golf course is not willing to change their greens, change their fairways, contribute any of their space to track them any way from their existing facility, but...
Hey, please.
But, but they're asking...
You have an opportunity to come to the microphone.
But they're asking all the residents on Ruffner, and especially the people adjoining twelve forty-five and in that area, to give up substantial, not property necessarily, but just ambiance, headlights shining in their living room windows, more traffic, degradation of the value of their homes. So all of us are being asked to suffer financially while the golf course is looking to make money out of this. If they want to make some money, that's fine with me. I'm totally in favor of capitalism and making money, but let them take some of their golf course, some of their greens, some of their fairways, slice it up any way they want to, and put the roads, the roundabouts, all of the facility on their property, not on our property. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members of the planning board, my name is Benjamin Romer, and I'm a lifelong Niskiuna resident, a Union College graduate, Niskiuna lacrosse coach, a realtor, and a real estate investor. I also live on Ruffner Road, directly across from the proposed development that we are here to discuss tonight. I come not only as a resident of this great town, but as a real estate professional, a father to an eight-month-old, and a Mohawk Club member, one who was blindsided by this development concept when it was introduced in October of twenty-one. I'm even more concerned as plans have developed to see, to what we see in the latest iteration. At that October meeting, I, like many others, was shocked to find that the developer plans to demolish the house across from my own, build a new road off Ruffner Road leading into the woods that buffers our neighborhood from the club grounds, tear down the woods, and develop a new neighborhood. I support progress, and I'm for thoughtful and necessary investment and development in our communities. However, when that development comes at the expense of people's quality of life at home, including my own and my family's, I cannot condone nor support such efforts. The residents of Ruffner Road and connected streets, my neighbors and I, are up against a proposal that will ruin the fabric of our neighborhood. It will increase traffic, reduce safety, and in no way will benefit any of the lives of these existing homeowners affected. Some families have lived here for over thirty years in the same house, and although my wife and I bought our house in twenty nineteen, we have developed strong relationships with our neighbors and a clear understanding of what an amazing neighborhood it is. We support one another, we look out for each other, and we have chosen to remain here because we love this town and the experience it affords our families. When that same experience is threatened and a proposal is issued without any alternative solutions but to demolish a house, impede on an existing road in an established neighborhood, and tie it all together with a roundabout, something needs to be done. Mind you, that roundabout would be at the end of my driveway. Personally, I've never seen or heard of a roundabout in a residential neighborhood. As a real estate professional, I can tell you with certainty my home value would be negatively impacted in the buyer pool, in any buyer pool extremely limited due to the many safety, logistical, and aesthetic impacts the roundabout would have on my property. Furthermore, when backing out of my driveway, I would have to navigate the curvature of a four-way intersection on coming traffic that may or may not yield, and I won't even try to explain the difficulty of backing my boat trailer out. As a visual exercise, I would like everyone here to imagine that you had a roundabout at the end of your driveway and whether that would benefit your current living situation and if increased traffic would be good for your home in any way. Any traffic increase to an already busy road will negatively impact buyer tendencies when considering to buy in this neighborhood, roundabout or not. Roundabouts help with the flow of traffic and alleviate congestion. We see them at busy intersections on state and county roads. A great example we all know is the Rexford Bridge, which worked tremendously. The old light that was causing traffic to back up to River Road at rush hour is now far less. It backs up, but certainly moves faster. But we do not have a congestion issue on Ruffner. We have a speed issue caused by heavy pass-through traffic, and our stop signs are overlooked. While the roundabout may slow traffic slightly, cars will continue to move swiftly along, run stop signs, and would need to be aware of the newly created road and increased traffic count brought on by the residents coming from the Mohawk Development. The proposal, this proposal creates so many more safety concerns than it alleviates because despite the demonstrated positive benefits of roundabouts, crashes still occur. And it's most often due to speed or drivers unaware of the yielding principles of roundabouts. Couple this with our winter-conditioned driving in icy roads, which we saw today, and this roundabout becomes a more probable crash site. Drivers passing through will continue to ignore stop signs. Those already speeding in residential neighborhoods will do so through the roundabout, causing major safety concerns for the houses surrounding the roadway feature, the pedestrians who often walk and ride bikes along Ruffner, the cars entering and exiting the roundabout, and my family sharing common egress. Outside of traffic issues this development causes, there is already a significant concern for the current infrastructure, as some of my neighbors have well mentioned. The town maintains a six-inch water main on Ruffner in a high-pressure zone, and this is likely, this likely cannot support the additional capacity. The sewer line is near or at capacity, and drainage issues exist for many houses along Ruffner. From an environmental standpoint, there will be a significant impact on the wildlife and potential wetlands in the woods to be demolished. The town's neighborhoods are its greatest asset and should be protected at all costs. Poor design that does not contribute but impacts the visual appeal, financial value, safety, and overall quality of life of these homes and neighborhoods should be vehemently opposed. Consideration should be given to developers that understand the true impact of their projects and are forward-thinking enough to engineer plans that utilize ingress and egress through the parcels they own and have a right to develop, but not at the expense of established neighborhoods and standing homes within a very close-knit community that have been there for decades. I implore the planning board to take my message and the message of my friends and neighbors in opposition to this development into consideration and understand the significant and detrimental impact a project like this can have on many facets of our lives. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, Ten Shorts, thirteen sixty-three Ruffner Court, and I have the privilege of reading to you a letter that my wife typed and retyped and retyped. Anyway, having been a resident in Niskiuna for over thirty years, I have followed decisions of the planning board with interest. In general, I've respected the decisions because it was apparent that most decisions served the greater good, even when they were controversial. The current proposal for Ruffner Road, however, offers no concern for the greater good of the neighborhood. In fact, it promises to affect the character of the neighborhood with increased traffic problems. Ruffner Road currently suffers from a combination of speeding traffic, service trucks creating one-lane road, and lots of adults and kids walking their dogs, riding their bikes, skateboarding, and waiting at bus stops. We've lived in Ruffner Court long enough to see the difference in the traffic before and after Whammer Lane, a paper road, was opened to connect Ruffner Road to Rao Road. This decision quickly increased traffic at Whammer because a major cut-through became a major cut-through for many residents beyond the boundaries of the Ruffner Road neighborhood. In addition, from early spring until late fall, there are always numerous service trucks parked on the street, requiring drivers to stop and negotiate just getting around them. Last summer, the speeding cars were such a problem, it prompted some neighbors, who are probably here tonight, to write and post signs asking people to slow down. I believe that the Ruffner Road neighborhood has already paid its dues by tolerating the increased traffic from the Whammer Lane connection, and it cannot safely accommodate anymore. A conservative estimate would be eighty more cars from the development. That is two cars per home with an expected one entrance and one exit daily. A rotary will not slow down traffic. Stop signs have not slowed down traffic. Most of the road is straight and will not crowded by service trucks. It invites acceleration. Now, I turn my attention to the specifics of the proposal to create a prestigious boulevard entrance on Ruffner Road by knocking down a home and creating a roundabout. Something is very wrong here. Why shouldn't established neighborhoods be forced to have a character change to accommodate such a request? I don't know. It appears that the developer is placing the burden of creating a prestigious entrance to the development on the Ruffner Road neighborhood rather than solving his challenges by using part of his own hundred-and-twenty-acre property. This parcel of land borders more appropriate access points on both Union Street and Balltown Road. Why not put this entrance on one of those roads? Neighbors surrounding the paper road in question knew it might be open someday, but to have that paper road expand into a boulevard, ending in a rotary, will change the whole character of Ruffner Road. character of Ruffner Road. Nearby neighbors will have their homes flooded with lights from all the cars using the roundabout, and that is not what one expects when a paper road is developed. If there is no way to stop opening the paper road in question, it should be one of a few paper roads that are open to other streets to reduce the traffic generated by the development, and it should be a modest road like the Whammer Lane extension, not a huge boulevard with who knows what signage and lighting, and it should not include a rotary. Almost done. There are other concerns. Since the Mohawk Golf Club is a private club, I wonder if this entrance will be gated or posted as a private road? We haven't heard anything about that. Will this development continue to add homes and townhouses over time? In summary, this is a plan that promises to threaten the character of our neighborhood. It also makes an already residential road traffic problem worse. The negative impact can't be ignored to accommodate a developer's desire to build a new neighborhood with the least amount of disruption to his 120-acre parcel. I ask our town board to deny the development proposal. The developer should be encouraged to find more appropriate locations for the entrances of the development, and a new place should be identified for the prestigious main entrance to what may one day become a huge development. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Charles Horowitz. I live on 1223 Ruffner Road. I spoke much earlier in this process, and at that meeting, I was the only person from Ruffner Road to speak, and I spoke against the project. Shortly after I spoke, one of the people representing the Mohawk Golf Course said, "Well, there's only one person speaking against this project, so I guess it's really okay that the neighborhood approves it." At each meeting since, there have been more and more people showing up, speaking against the project, and from what you hear tonight, it's really fairly widespread across the whole neighborhood. So I think that we can take that comment, that there's only one person opposing, and put that to rest. That is not the case. What I have noticed is that nobody has spoken in favor of the project, except for the project managers themselves. There have been nobody from Ruffner Road, no people who are residents of Niskiuna. I haven't heard anything from the schools saying, "Yes, we want this project." I haven't heard anybody say they want this project, except the project managers. So I'd like to throw that comment back onto them. They are the only ones supporting it. Everybody else is against it. Now, I've heard many people speak over the last several meetings and tonight, and I'm not going to repeat those points. There's 100 different reasons why different people do not want the project to go forward. But for me, it isn't the road, it isn't the roundabout, it isn't any single thing. It's everything. It's all of the above. It's the golf course just simply taking something and putting it in the farthest corner of their land and dumping all the negatives onto us, whereas they don't want them themselves. And I say to you, as I said the other time when I spoke, if they want this so bad, let them set it up by the clubhouse where there's easy access to existing roads, and let it be on their territory, not on ours. Thank you.
I don't live on Ruffner Road. I live in Old Niskiuna, and I just learned about this recently, and I'm so glad to see so many people here. I mean, my name's Jenny Frank, I'm sorry. And I don't have as much information. I am appalled, though, that I have no information. This kind of thing should be in the newspapers. It should be something that everybody in Niskiuna learns about. I mean, I wasn't really happy about a lot of the developments. The development of the flower farm over on River Road. So I just want to say that it is not just an issue for the people on Ruffner Road. It is an issue for everybody in Niskiuna, and I intend to write a letter to the editor and at least people to read the newspaper, which there's not so many of them anymore. I think everyone should know about it, because I think if the larger public in Niskiuna knew about this, they would be opposed also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 1223 Ruffner Road, and we moved into this house in 1989, so we're old timers. The reason we moved here, we picked Niskiuna for the schools, and we picked Rosendale for its stability and its character, probably like everybody else. And we also, when we bought, made a huge leap, and it was an enormous financial sacrifice. It was terrifying for us. And the reason we, but we did our research, and we felt comfortable enough to do it because zoning was in place, and Niskiuna had successfully maintained not just Rosendale, but other neighborhoods with quality and with integrity for decades. So we felt confident. We trusted the town. So there's been development, I think some good, some, I think, concerning. Most of the concerning stuff has to do with dwindling green space and traffic. We have traffic jams now, which I never thought would be possible. We have rush hours, which is amazing to me. And so it's clear that there are impacts that come about as a result of your decisions. So these tend to be irreversible, and for example, we are now kind of stuck with the traffic, and the lesson we've learned is that I think we really have to keep an eye out on what's happening in our community, and we have to be careful. So that makes this project really incomprehensible to me. I mean, Rosendale has maintained that character for 70 years, which seems kind of unbelievable. It's a very long time. The lots are large, the houses are unique, building styles have changed, and it's grown, but the town has really done a great job of maintaining the character of this community. What's being proposed in the Mohawk Golf Course is exactly the opposite. To me, these are identical duplexes that are crowded one on top of the other. It's a misfit, it's unsightly, it's huge, and it will change our neighborhood permanently. Why would they want to build in this location? Right, they make money, and they located it where they don't have to look at it. And to do this, Mohawk is looking to you for variances. So rules matter, zoning laws matter. Variances are also provided as a mechanism. 15 years ago, we had one to add our garage, and to do it, we asked our neighbors had to sign off on it, which they did. But that's not what we have here. There is no resident in that neighborhood that is on board with this project, none. And as community members are finding out, opposition is growing, and I think anger is growing. Every meeting we have, it seems like the number of people objecting doubles. And here we are, we got a snowy night, a school night, people have work, and we are all voting with our feet. There are so many problems with this proposal, it's hard to know where to even begin. I agree with the objections raised about traffic, water runoff, school crowding, wildlife, and that totally weird roundabout. By the way, we did have a two-lane roundabout in Niskiuna. It was at Mohawk Commons. I don't know if anybody remembers this, but wow, there were a million fender benders on that one. It was a surprise as you navigate through, it's like, wow, there's a roundabout here, and it's really small. So that lasted less than a year, I think, and they tore it out, and now there's a normal four-way stop. But at any rate, I call on you all to justify the trust that the residents of this town and this neighborhood have placed with you. Put this thing out of its misery like ASAP.
Hi, my name is Marlene Lauks, and I've lived at 1191 Ruffner for 44 years now. I have talked to a neighbor who's been a member of the club for a while, and he's talked to other members, and when I was talking to him, because he would be, he's on the other side of the fence from me, he would be at the corner, we would be at the corner of where things would stop. Just the smaller houses on South Country Club, and those are right behind me. But when I talked with these people I talked with, he was saying, you know, he was kind of justifying the fact that the club has put in all this money, you know, it was in such terrible trouble, they put in all this money, and they need to recoup this money, and he said, "And what I'm hearing is that they're going to do what they can do, and they're planning to sell it in a couple of years anyway." So this is opening the door. I mean, who knows? Once you let part of a development in, and then the next, they sell the club, and it's been done before, and who's to say it's not going to then happen some more? And it will create even more density and problems with water and everything else. So I think we need to consider that you're opening the door here, and something more could go on. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sean Moran, and I reside at 1357 Ruffner Road. My family and I have lived in Ruffner Road for more than 14 years and chose this neighborhood because of its character. We were appalled to read about the Mohawk Golf Club's proposal to destroy a section of Ruffner and develop adjacent high-density housing. While we enjoy the charming houses and tree-lined streets of our neighborhood, we don't enjoy the heavy traffic, lack of sidewalks, and very limited street lighting. Over the years that we've lived here, it's become more dangerous to ride our bikes, walk our dogs, walk ourselves, especially during peak commute periods in the evening. There are several blind spots or blind spot areas due to curved roads and heavy landscaping at certain intersections. Drivers frequently speed and roll through stop signs. You've heard that several times tonight, it's true. And the proposed development plan would increase traffic significantly, posing even greater safety concerns. In addition to the safety concerns, we want to underscore the sewer and water main capacity concerns that the board itself has noted. Unfortunately, we're all too familiar with backups from the town's line. In February of 2014, our basement was inundated with raw sewage. Due to backup from the town's line, our homeowner's insurance rejected our claim since the sewage stemmed from the town's line, yet the town was held harmless. And God help you if it happens to you, because you're on your own. We don't want that to see, we don't want to see that happen to anyone else, or have them deal with the year-long process and financial burden. With this personal history in mind, we have great concerns about adding nearly two dozen additional homes to the existing system. Lastly, the proposed demolition of the existing home at 1245 Ruffner Road is a significant alteration to the character of our street and neighborhood. To follow that up with the installation of an access road with a roundabout, would in question be a detriment to the safety, character, and quality of life for us and our neighbors? Development of one's property should not be to the detriment of the property of others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Thomas, and I have stood up here before and expressed my grievances and 100% opposition to this horrible, horrible idea. But tonight, I'm here to speak for one Margaret Corey of Hilltop Road, and she wrote to me and said this. Looking at the revised plans, it appears the developer's mostly focused on traffic and open space. Both analyses seem incomplete. The traffic analysis supporting the roundabout concept deadends into Rao Road. All the traffic into Rao will continue likely to Rose Hill, then St. Anne, then not Street East. So there is a larger impact than shown. In fact, it is more like the through-road study. The open space analysis became compliant based on the percent of space disturbed. But if you look at the numbers, there is actually more open space in the original plans. The idea should be to minimize open space disturbance, not play a numbers game. Why can't they mitigate the issue along the Balltown Road area like it was recommended in the earlier meeting notes? Probably a minor point, but why a sign at the Ruffner Road entrance, like to an apartment complex? There are not signs at the entrance of Rosendale Estates or Woodcrest, the affected neighborhoods. The sign concept is not consistent with maintaining the neighborhood in my mind. There's still a ways to go, but I would be interested in how they're going to address the sewer capacity and water line tap-in issues without even more construction disturbance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll read this for my shy, meek wife. Not.
She got you to do it, though.
I'm gonna do it. This is for Becky Thomas of 1265 Ruffner Road. Dear members of the planning board, my name is Becky Thomas, and I live at 1265 Ruffner Road. I grew up in Niskiuna and left here to go to school at RPI. I returned here from Boston with my husband, Mark, to have and raise our three children. Ruffner Road has always been known as one of the nicest places to live in Niskiuna because of its well-established, large lot, single-family homes bordered by woods and wetlands, full of diverse wildlife. We bought our house on Ruffner Road because of the beautiful woods and privacy behind us. We enjoy watching peregrine falcons, red-bellied woodpeckers, piliated and downies, hoot owls, foxes, derkey, deer, woodchucks, and so many different kinds of birds in our property and in the woods. I'm writing you to oppose the Mohawk Golf Club application for sketch plan approval for the development off Ruffner Road. The Mohawk Club has many other acres of property that they can develop without the destruction of these beautiful woods, wetlands, and natural habitat, and displacement of all the diverse wildlife and their environment. The Mohawk Club already has three existing entrances and exits and roads. A house shouldn't be torn down, and additional roads shouldn't be built. Traffic on Ruffner Road has already become dangerous and a safety concern, and should not be increased. The town should be considering how to reduce the traffic and increase safety. In addition, there are many power outages here and water drainage and sewage concerns.
Hey, you guys, you think five hours, no power.
The destruction of these woods, green spaces, and natural habitat, and replacement with buildings, roads, that are impermeable, will increase all these problems and make it much worse. The hundreds of residents, that my husband and I have spoken with, who are opposed to this development, it is extremely detrimental to the town and its residents. There are no benefits at all. Thank you, Becky Thomas.
My name is David Amodio, and I live at 1382 Rose Hill Boulevard with my wife, Margie. Our address is right at the very foot of Ruffner Road, so if you're driving down Ruffner Road and you forget to hit the brakes, you will be joining us for dinner in our dining room. That's exactly where we live. So Margie and I bought our home four years ago, and we were thrilled at the prospect of having a piece of property where we could put in a beautiful garden and some fruit trees. It was our dream. We moved here from Albany. Margie works in Niskiuna. So we were fortunate that we found this lovely property, beautiful home, nice piece of land. It was in the winter, however. Come spring, when I went to mow what is actually a field behind our house, our mower got bogged down in the mud. Turns out that in the winter, the land is nice and firm and mostly frozen. In the spring, it is a swamp. So we bore ahead, we moved forward anyways with our plan for our garden, planted about a dozen or so fruit trees and some pine trees in the back of our property, but it's so wet that we have But it's so wet that we have ducks that nest in the very rear of our property in our Fox Hollow rear yard neighbors. So we've lost about six fruit trees so far because the roots have rotted because it's so wet. We can mow finally around the first week of June, we're able to mow successfully. We love the wildlife. I will echo everyone's sentiments this evening about the downsides, all the downsides of this development and why we feel blessed to have what we have. We are very concerned about the additional water. Water flows downhill unless you've got a really hefty pump. We are at the bottom of that hill. We have two sewer grates in our driveway proper and a third on the street on Rose Hill Boulevard. There is a swell. I think that's the correct engineering term that runs between our property at 1382 and our neighbor directly to the north at 1386. That swell runs between our properties behind theirs. They actually have to have a little bridge to cross over to try to enjoy their backyard, which is also full of cattails and very swampy almost all summer long. Ours doesn't really dry out until the end of July when the ducks finally leave. So my concern is about stormwater management essentially. I don't know what this development will do, but we are very fearful that what we've already lost in our investment in our garden and in our trees will only be exacerbated by this development. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Coming from the back, Ruthie Ambrosi, 1184 Hedgewood Lane. Been a resident since about 1983 and we really enjoyed Niskiuna. It's got a lot of character, a lot of family. A good place to bring up a family. My two boys went through the high school system here and that's fine. Now regarding this subdivision, which is fine, we understand they have a right to develop, but the 14 acres they talked about, we would like to ask the planning board to consider what is the long-range plan for the golf club property and future development? In other words, are they going to do more as it's phase one, phase two, phase three? Are they going to chop it up and really hurt the community? And how will the following infrastructure items be affected? You've got the schools, you've got the water system, and you've got the sewer systems that as I understand it generally are at full capacity. So now they're going to do 14 acres. What's going to happen the next time and the next time? There's no question they have a right to develop, but let's do it according to the rules. Since this is not a hardship, I ask that less destructive entrances be considered. There's Rao Road, there's Country Club, there's Balltown. Be shown and submitted. This idea of a roundabout, is that just a smokescreen or what to put in a residential neighborhood at Mountain View and Ruffner? I asked that question. And also, if I read the drawings right, the little sketch that I saw, I don't know if those right-of-way are consistent with the town rules. Most of the existing right-of-ways are 60 feet. They have 10 single-family homes shown on their drawings. It's approximately 16,800 feet. You have 12 townhomes only at 20,000 feet. You're getting two families on one lot, basically. So you're not getting 22 families in there, you're getting 34. So 34 times two is what, 68 cars to begin with? All I'm asking is that you follow the current zoning laws. As I recall, 18,000 square feet for a house in townhomes were not permitted in our one. So we ask that you consider that, not grant a variance, make it more dense when you don't have to in that neighborhood. I don't think it's to the benefit of the characters there. All I'm saying is let's follow the rules. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Before I begin, I just want to thank the members of the board. Certainly happy to see Laura here. You are a true asset to the community. Thank you. Dear members of the planning board, my name is Omar Luce. I reside at 2201 Rosendale Road. I come before the board tonight to share my thoughts on the proposed development and stand in support of my neighbors who have expressed concern about it. Undoubtedly, the current proposal brings a reflexive opposition to the apparent and notable impact and disruption that will be introduced to our neighborhood. Debate of impact to ecology, traffic flow, and overwhelming the public infrastructure will occur at every stage of this project, and it should. These are issues of importance that can be measured and analyzed to draw conclusions. However, I'm here to speak on a matter that's somewhat difficult to quantify, the character of the proposal, as referenced in Chapter 95, Section 2 of the Town Code. The current proposal is of concern because of what it characterizes, a private enterprise requiring economic support by its neighbors. Mohawk Golf Club is a private club where a private club, where paying members are permitted to enjoy the facility. I'm not aware of a service that they provide to the public and frankly cannot recall a time they have had a positive interaction with the public. They have their right to exclusivity. The members can be residents of the town, but the enterprise itself has no commitment to the town. Likewise, residents of the town have no commitment to the club. Furthermore, the planning board has no commitment to the club. The board's primary commitment here is preservation of the character of the town. What is proposed deviates from that commitment. How? The proposal is a judgment on competing interests and investments, namely the interests and investments of a town and especially the neighborhood residents on the, on one hand, and the interests and investments of the club on the other hand. The club's interests are aligned with the private enterprise to sustain membership and secure profit. At past board meetings, it's been understood and said that club members have expressed interest in becoming homeowners of these proposed homes. Therefore, these homes will be built to accommodate the needs of their owners who are members of the club. These homes are not necessarily designed with the typical resident of Niskiuna in mind, a resident who has a family, who is in search of a safe and open community to live. These homes will not provide an opportunity for diversity within our community. They are meant to attract, select, and satisfy a specific type of homeowner, establishing a de facto gated community. How does that character measure against our established town's character? As for the interests and investments of the existing neighborhood residents, who's to say that their homes, their investments are inferior to that of the club? Are residents permitted to ensure that their home investment remains net positive? What's the character demonstrated in this decision? It's not the responsibility of the town's residents or the officials representing the town to make a private enterprise profitable. And it's certainly out of character to request the town's residents to accept this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Teresa Mannix, I am at 1230 Ruffner Road. I wasn't actually planning on saying anything tonight and so I appreciate the opportunity. I just want to express some gratitude for allowing all of us to have our voice heard and my neighbors expressing gratitude to all of you for being so passionate about the community that we live in. I am one of the newest residents of our neighborhood. We moved in in August of 2020, not been there long, just before our son's first birthday. And I just wanted to share, I echo the sentiments of everything that our neighbors have, have shared with you tonight and the, the impact that this will have on our amazing community. My husband and I wouldn't even have bought on Ruffner Road had we known this was going to be a proposal and changing the character of this neighborhood. But I want to share with you something that happened Labor Day weekend in 2020 that sort of speaks to everything that people have said about the traffic on the road. The night before Labor Day, so it's a Sunday night, we're still in boxes, have not unpacked, just celebrated our son's first birthday in our house and we were woken in the middle of the night by a very, very loud noise and, which I thought was something fell over in the garage or great, the new house we moved into is haunted. I don't know what it was, but it got me up in the middle of the night enough that I had to look around and see what happened. And somebody was speeding down the road, ran the stop sign and hit a tree on our property. That's already happening. And thankfully, no one was hurt and nothing has happened. And since then, we've taken down about 17 trees off of our, off of our entire lot. So we know that there were a lot and I just, I think that this also is just one of the things that we can highlight as evidence that we're already in, we're already at capacity on our road. So regardless of what happens with the development, and yes, that will change the way that the whole neighborhood feels and looks, the proposal to have the traffic coming through there is, is absolutely going to do more harm than, than it will good for the entire community. So, thank you.
Ruffner Road, too. I saw that. Heard it.
Is there someplace where we can take a number here tonight or? Oh, oh, sorry. My name is Stephen Clemente. I live at 1231 Ruffner Road and I think we are the newest residents because we moved in November 1st of 2021. So we're a year behind our neighbors across the street. This afternoon, I delivered a petition to Laura's office, which was very kindly accepted with 116 people, many of which are in this room tonight, that opposed the development on the golf course for all the reasons that are listed. Now, I'm a capitalist. I'm pro-development. But thanks to my father, I have good common sense and this development does not make common sense. It doesn't make common sense to drive a road into a residential neighborhood with a strong character, with many, many people with young children. I'm the individual that knocked on the doors for most of these people along with Mark Thomas and Tracy Papa-Moorhouse, who wasn't here. There are boatloads of young families. If you want the numbers, I'll get them for you. Okay? Increasing traffic on that road is not a wise decision for a planning board. It just isn't. I walk my dogs every single day, two and a half, three miles. Verizon is in the neighborhood putting fiber in for FiOS. It's treacherous. I mean, not just for, not just for the people walking and running and biking, but it's treacherous for people driving on the road because they become one-lane roads, whether it's Ruffner or Hawthorne or Mountain View or Hedgewood or Ruffner Court. It doesn't make any difference. It's all very, very treacherous. And I urge you again to take some time and be in the neighborhood. All hours of the day, the buses, the FedEx trucks, it's a difficult, difficult road to navigate. So that is critical. You have a copy of the petition that we brought forward. There were four people that called my house at 5 o'clock tonight that want to be added to the petition. So I urge you to listen to the residents. That's what the planning board needs to do. There are laws specifically governing what they can do. They have access to Union. They have access to Balltown. I mean, really? What are you driving through a residential, what are you driving a new road through a residential neighborhood for? Okay? If you want to develop it, develop your property, but you don't have to come to Ruffner Road at a minimum. Likewise, the other issues are major and need to be investigated, water systems and sewer systems. I have a grinder in my basement. Many of the people in this neighborhood have grinders in their basement in order to make sure that their sewers aren't backing up. Okay? That's extremely important from a planning standpoint as well as the water systems. And that stuff needs to be researched in a different, in addition to an independent traffic assessment because it will consider, make, exacerbate a situation that is already bad. It's already bad. And I'll say it again, spend some time in the neighborhood. You're going to say, good common sense is not allowing egress or ingress to Ruffner Road for this development. Would we like to see it someplace else? Yes. I didn't get pictures of the coyote cutting through the woods, the woods this afternoon at 12:05 when I was with my wife looking out the door in a snowstorm. Tons of wildlife, all kinds of wildlife. Environmentalists extremely upset. I'm an environmentalist. We bought the property because of the woods behind the house. That's why we bought it. We came from eight acres out in Skodat where you couldn't see a house and 200 acres of woods all around us. But that was a concession. We said, at least we have woods behind us. Well, no longer. If we knew that this development was coming in, which was not disclosed, by the way, when we bought the house, we would not have bought the house. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more letter from one of concerned resident, one of my neighbors that lives up the street, that's what she asked me to read tonight. Tracy Papa-Moorhouse, who lives at 1206 Ruffner Road and is a longtime resident. Tracy writes, "I am writing in protest to the board about the egress of Ruffner Road that Mohawk Golf Club Residential Development is attempting to acquire. Unfortunately, I cannot attend the January 23 meeting. I will not be in town nor available to attend via Zoom. I myself was before the zoning board last year. I was impressed by the board's thought process in not allowing change that would impact the street or neighborhood. I bought my house in 2007 for the neighborhood, the school district, the walkability, the charming old established street. An egress would add 60 to 100 cars to our road a day. This would be a burden to a road that already is busy and used as a drive-through for other streets in the neighborhood. The two egresses that are proposed are either across from my driveway or about six houses down the street from my home. I believe the acreage that is available in Mohawk Country Club is 120 acres. So more development in that parcel is probably going to happen. We all know the statistics on private golf courses. Tax changes basically impact most of them. I believe that the purchase of the said property was with development in mind. $33,500 per acre is a very inexpensive price for acreage in Niskiuna." The emphasis is to put a house on. "The future of all egress would only add many, many more cars to an already busy road that is not a major road and that is not set up for large numbers of cars. I bought on Ruffner Road because it wasn't a busy road like Union, Balltown, or Route 7, which have many older charming homes like Ruffner that I liked. But I wanted a neighborhood that was walkable, bikeable, and didn't require a traffic light. The most notable difference in Ruffner over the last 15 years I have lived here was that many of the older neighbors have sold their homes to families with children. I believe that most of the people own homes on Ruffner, have young children who ride their bikes, scooters, walk to friends' homes and such. Many people walk their dogs, jog, ride, ride their bikes. That is one reason we all bought here. I am convinced that an egress would destroy the neighborhood and lower our property values and make it more dangerous as well. I myself would not have bought on such a road that will come if the egress is allowed. I have every intention of staying at my residence for the next 30 years. I have added a garage and are doing a major exterior renovation to ensure that my house is basically maintenance-free on the outside. None of this would have been done nor the cost incurred had I known that the neighborhood I live in was in possible peril of drastically changing for the worse. I can add, express how strongly I object to any egress from Mohawk Golf Club's residential development on Ruffner Road being allowed." Thank you, Tracy Papa-Moorhouse.
Thank you.
Mark Thomas, 1265 Ruffner. I just want to make a couple of comments, one along the lines of traffic safety. I think I mentioned to the board last time that we've renamed the name of our street Ruffner Raceway. My biggest fear, one of my biggest fears is when I'm mowing the first few rows of my lawn, that I'm going to get hit by a car. You know, they come by at 50 miles an hour, land on the horn and give me the finger because I'm turning around and my butt goes into the road a little bit. It's ridiculous. Excuse me. You need to have some water here. Excuse me, please. You'll have an opportunity to come to the microphone. We need to have some water, okay, please? The other is regarding, people keep talking about character of the neighborhood and the feel of the neighborhood. I have a very direct experience with that. For 20 years before the nine years we've been living on Ruffner Road, we lived at the, at the end of Hilltop and Rao with the dead end there, that cute little gray cape. One day I came home at lunch and the Mohawk had taken down three, four, or five trees just past this fence in my backyard. And I stood in my backyard and I felt like naked, exposed. I didn't, it felt so different. Imagine if they took down 400 trees on Ruffner Road, changed the character of your neighborhood? I guarantee you, you will not recognize your own neighborhood after they get done raping that forested area. Thank you.
Carol Holmes, 1301 Ruffner Road. I'm sure you're tired of looking at me and listening to me. And I said I wasn't going to get up tonight, but I've sat here and I've listened to all of these people and I've watched your faces and I haven't seen what I wished I could see. You are ruining a legend. People wished to live on Ruffner Road. That was your... That was your, your claim to fame when you were growing up. I grew up in inner city Schenectady, and to be able to live on Ruffner Road was more than a dream come true. I've sat and I've listened to these people, these developers. They started out like, oh, we're going to be your good buddies. And they had these elaborate three plans out, and it wasn't, we're not idiots up there on Ruffner Road. We're well-educated people. They had three plans, and clearly one was like, oh my God, there's all these condominiums and whatever. The next time we met, the plan changed. Now we were supposed to be reassured that they had listened to us, and now we were down to townhouses and homes, separate homes. I don't trust them anymore. I don't believe them anymore. Every time a plan comes up, it's changed. They were supposed to have talked to us on the 9th. They didn't get paperwork in here in time. In that length of time from then to now, we have a roundabout. I don't believe they have any intention of doing a roundabout. I think that their intention is to make us think that their little boulevard is a, is a great compromise on their part, and shouldn't we be thrilled to death that they're wanting to be such good neighbors? These are not good neighbors, folks. I'm sitting here scared as I listen to people say, this might be only step one. This is not an owner that cares about the people. He cares about his own property, and he has that right. Everybody has a right to do with their property, but he doesn't maintain what he has right now. And now he's going to add more people to that and more houses? I shudder to think that you people don't care about that. Please care. Please care. We're taxpayers. We're good people up there, and we count on you to do what we elected you to do. Please don't let us down. Thank you for listening.
Hi. Lisa Crusoe, 1261 Ruffner Road. My dog Barney was killed. A beautiful copper spaniel being raking the leaves was killed. People flying down the road killed my freaking dog. And believe me, guys, I think yours are all corrupt. It's life, what it is, politics, and it's what it is. And guess what? Us all look right here, we're going to lose because we're guys corrupt. Your guys are going to win everything. Bye.
Hello. My name is Danielle West. I'm a longtime resident of Niskuna. I grew up here. I went to Iroquois Middle School. I went to Niskuna High School. I'm currently an educator of 20 years. I actually live nowhere near where this is happening. I have some family members affected. I have a beautiful new niece who is going to grow up on that street, and her play area is going to be out looking at a roundabout that cars fly around. There's no stop signs. There's nothing. And I'm, I'm sitting here listening to all of these people who live on that road, and my heart breaks for them. And I think if this is allowed, anybody who allows this should be ashamed. I mean, this is a community where people want to raise a family, where these kids feel safe, where they run out and they play in their neighborhood with other kids. And I would feel awful as a parent if I would have to worry when I go out that my child might be hit by a car because you have all these people going around this roundabout. And I've learned a lot about this tonight from hearing all of these members and all of these people affected. And I'm sitting here, and I'm actually feeling angry. And I don't, this is not affecting me personally, but I think if it's not affecting you personally, you should think about what it would feel like if it did. I'm sure you're all parents. And also on the school aspect, our Niskuna schools are overcrowded as it is. These kids can't even fit in these classrooms. And now they're going to bring in new homes with possibly new families with new kids and make that more of an issue? I just think that this is very heartbreaking for these people, and I think, like the last woman that just was up here, you really need to think about that and take that into consideration because that is just awful. And I'm sure none of you would want your children to run outside and play, and you have to worry about that. You want to live in a neighborhood where they're able to grow up and create those memories and feel safe. And Niskuna is a small town, a great community where all of these people and families should be able to feel that and have that live on and not have it be turned into this busy, you know, it, it's really just for profit. It's really just for somebody to make money. And they have a right to do that, but in the right place, not where they're hurting other people's lives and hurting children.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Romero. I live at 1122 Ruffner Road. And I, and my wife and I are homeowners for a little over 10 years now. When we first moved in, my, my son was starting first grade. My daughter was starting second, second grade. We came here because of the unique character and everything you've heard by my neighbors this evening. Since we've been in, in our home, we've seen our neighbors' homes turn and, and new families come in. We have more children today than, than we had 10 years ago. And that's one of the things that I'm most concerned about. It's the future, our children, who will, can they play safely outside? Can they ride their bikes? Can they learn to ride their bikes outside? You are all parents. The last time that I was up here, I talked about NIMBY, and I, and I really sincerely mean that. There's, there's, there's an interest by some to, to want to not worry about other people's problems because as long as it doesn't happen in their backyard, it doesn't matter. Well, you heard tonight, it's not just a Ruffner Road, but it's, it's a town issue. And as a town issue, I think you have a, you have a responsibility to protect and speak for the town and what is best for the town and what is best for tomorrow. And it's because of all those reasons that you heard here tonight that, that we want You know how sometimes you can get so mad that you lose the ability to say what you want to say? Well, that's where I, that's where I am right now because it really, it makes absolutely no sense. It makes no sense what we're trying to do here or what the, the club is trying to do. It's not about, it's not about the, the residents. It's not about the children. It's, it's about how they can make more money and looking at this in the short-term range. Everybody moved into Niskuna because they wanted to look at the long range of things. And that's what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Schwartz, 1363 Ruffner Court. I'm coming up to talk for myself. There are a few issues that no one's talked about that I feel are important, even though I have no professional knowledge in this area. I've been on Ruffner Court. The houses behind me are on Row Road. Whenever there was a heavy rainstorm and God forbid electricity went out, there were many basements that got flooded. The golf course then put in a holding area below the 14T, just above the southern end of Whammer, which helped prevent a lot of that runoff. But when it rains hard, there still is excess runoff on, on Row Road where the whole road is flooded. If they clearcut the 14 acres, if you look at a geog, at a geo, whatever it is, the maps, you'll see that all that water from that 14 acres is going to come right down Row Road, and you're going to prevent, because it's not that far away, you're going to have another huge water drainage issue there. Now, on the drawing, they show a holding area, but I don't know if that holding area is really adequate to hold all the water from all the blacktop and all the trees. Number one point. Number two point, if you, they're trying to build a community in the cheapest way possible for the golf course. If they really cared about the trees and they really cared about the wildlife, what they could do is they could build the development on where some of the golf course is and put two or three holes where the 14 acres of trees are, which means they could cut paths to put the golf course, and they could keep the majority of the trees. But God forbid, and why would they do that? They don't want to touch the precious golf course. If they did that, they could put it closer to the main roads. Now, I don't know anything about the economics and all this, but that would solve a lot of problems. Just a thought. Thank you.
Okay. Privilege of the floor is still open. Anybody?
Chairman, I think we have some people online.
Good. Sure. You want to recognize them?
Yeah. Ms. Cassidy Dorian, did you want to speak on a privilege of the floor?
Yes. Thank you so much, Laura. I don't know that I have anything new to add to the, to the conversation, but I just wanted to, first of all, I'm Erin Cassidy Dorian. I am at 1114 Ruffner. I, I just, I really think we can boil this down to basics, which is really what everybody else has said, is that this provides absolutely no benefit to our community whatsoever. It is only beneficial to a privately owned entity, and that should be the end of the conversation, in my opinion. I'm voicing support for everybody that's come up and, and spoke about things that I didn't even think about. I really, my first thought was the increase in traffic on Ruffner. And I have young children, and I'm right near the corner of Rosendale, and they come whipping around the corner, and it is a little scary, and I don't want to see any more cars. But now, listening to all of the things that all of these brilliant people have come to, to discuss, it's now, it, it just becomes a, a snowballing issue. And I, I, I really intended to start this very brief, I'm going to wrap this up, very brief statement by saying, thank you very much to the planning board. I know that there's a lot of very angry people, but I just want to thank you for the work that you're doing because I, I think it's very difficult work. And I know that you've got a lot coming at you, and I, I hope that you evaluate it with the same lens that we all have. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I see there's two people that joined by phone. I don't know if you're able to unmute yourself. Sometimes you have to press star six, but I see a, a phone number ending in 48 and a phone number ending in 70. I didn't know if either of those people wanted to speak on a privilege of the floor.
Do you want to speak? Unmute your phone and let us know.
Okay. Well, I'll mute my phone. My name is Dana Moses, and we purchased a home at 1302 Row Road. We haven't even moved in yet. We are at the very end of the street, and part of the beauty was it's a dead end. And we were so surprised to find out about this development. I guess we maybe didn't do our due diligence, but we're getting an education, and we appreciate all that everyone has contributed this evening. And we hope the planning board makes the right decision because we've listened here. We don't see any benefits. All we see is our new home purchase, which we haven't even started paying the mortgage. We just see it just going down the drain. So thank you. I hope you really make the right decision.
Thank you. And how about who's on number, phone number ending in 70? Last chance. Okay. How about the public here? Anybody in town hall that would like to speak?
Luisa Lombardo at 1242. And as nervous as I was at the beginning, I, I've been watching planning board meetings on YouTube, hours and hours, and I was very impressed at the last meeting, and especially you, Laura, with the Kia motor thing, that you were so concerned about that one little house that would be left over on the street and how, how you were very sensitive to how that person would feel, given the nature of that neighborhood. And I just felt, okay, yeah. So if you can give our community here on Ruffner Road that same level of understanding and sensitivity, that would be great. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Like I said earlier, this will be your last, you know, chance to talk. Once we get in, it's just a working session for the rest of the night. And Laura, there is, I know you, you passed out to the town, or to this planning board all the emails, the petition. We all had received copies of, of all the information that was sent in.
Yeah. I just wanted to note, we received the petition that was emailed to the planning board and the town board tonight, and also we received 17, sorry, 13 emails. I think a fair number of them came, but I did also have an email from Mike Mason, Kevin Holmes, George Young, Jennifer Reagan, and then a variety of people who spoke, and we will be attaching those emails to the minutes.
Right. So we'll all get copies of those. Town board will receive copies, and it'll be attached to the minutes. I know we're behind on minutes, but keep watching the webpage, and it'll be updated, and everything's always there. I can tell everybody, same information that we get is available to all of you. Okay? Anybody else before I close? Privilege of the floor? Sure? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll close privilege of the floor. And just, just for information, one thing I meant to say earlier, item number, let's see, number four on the agenda tonight under discussion items, Aqueduct Road, which is Rivers Ledge. The applicant there requests to be pulled from the agenda tonight, so there'll be no discussion. If anybody's here for Rivers Ledge, Aqueduct Road, we won't be talking about that at all tonight. But we will go, move into in a couple of minutes into our discussion items. Obviously, you're all welcome to stay. We haven't heard from the developer on 1851 Union Street, 1245 Ruffner Road. Last meeting, the submittal was late and it did not make the agenda. So we haven't, you know, the developer has not been in front of us for four weeks. So we're going to hear, you know, the why and some information tonight about, you know, why the, why the roundabout proposal, the traffic number. So that's, you know, it's a work in progress, and we're going to hear all that tonight. And obviously, you're all welcome to stay or, or watch it later on. Okay? Thank you.
Okay? It's the first topic on the agenda, correct?
And it's the first topic on the agenda. So nobody else for privilege of the floor? I'm going to close privilege, privilege of the floor then. Okay? All right. Again, you're welcome to stay. We have no unfinished business. We have no, no new business tonight. There's no resolutions. This board is not taking any actions tonight at all. Basically, discussion. Okay? And with that, with that said, we'll move to discussion items. The first discussion item being 1851 Union Street, which is also 1245 Ruffner Road. That's a single-family home that they own, and that's the Mohawk Golf Club application for average density development. And what we'll do is we'll have the representative of the golf club talk about the latest mittal, bring this board up to speed, and we'll have some Q and A between the board and the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Laura, could you summarize the process that we're following here?
Okay, sure. So this is currently proposed as an average density development, which is a sort of joint application process. It's one-half special use permit and one-half subdivision. And so both the planning board and the town board are involved in the process. At current stage, the planning board is reviewing the subdivision and the special use permit. Subdivision typically at this point is kind of a sketch plan to decide, you know, things like utilities, access, number of lots, that type of thing. And then they are required by our code to submit a recommendation to the town board on the special use permit, special use permit for the subdivision. When they're working on that recommendation, they do do a public hearing. At the public hearing, that's the time when the planning board actually mails letters to all the residents within, I believe when, and I have to double-check, but when my staff person was trying to be very helpful, she, she mentioned to me that it's a 500-foot radius. So we're hearing from, I think I heard a fair number of Ruffner, a couple of Row, a couple of Hillside. When the planning board does its public hearing, we notify everyone on the edges of the parcel. So not only Ruffner, but Country Club, Union, Balltown, Hilltop, all those people would actually get a letter in the mail, but we haven't reached that process yet. We don't do the public hearing until we're actually getting into a phase of making our recommendation to the town board. And then at that point, the, the planning board would hold a rec, a public hearing for a recommendation to the town board. Town board holds its own public hearing to take action on the special use permit. So there's still quite a bit of process left and many opportunities for public input.
All right. If I might elaborate a little more, and if the town board approves... And if the town board approves, uh, the average density development, the special use permit comes back to this board, it continue the process because, you know, the developer, as you can understand, doesn't do all the final engineering and everything because if it doesn't get approved, the amount of cost that it would take to do that. So, um, so that's why we may not have all the details about impacts on sewer water yet. It's, it's a work in progress at this point in time. Uh, right now, it's a concept and we're working our ways through it. Also heard earlier tonight, a couple of comments that, um, uh, variances are required. There are no variance, variances required on the submittal as it stands right now. Um, the average density development is a process, a, and a process that is our code and the, uh, the applicant is following the code and we're following the procedure to get us to the endpoint. Okay?
Yeah, the only confusion that some people may have had is the original application had variances.
Correct.
So, it's understandable why it's out there that the application needed variances, but they did revise it so that at this point, there aren't any area variances required.
Right. And the average density development allows for the smaller lots. I heard tonight, concerned that these lots are smaller. That's part of the average density development, uh, that allows for that, that process. Okay? All right, sorry and thank you.
Thank you. And good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Kimmer from ABD Engineers. I'm here on behalf of the Mohawk Golf Club. And, um, I think all of you are very familiar with this project so far. You know, this is our fourth time, uh, before this board. Um, you know, it's, it remains an average density development with 22 lots, 12 townhome lots and 10 single family lots with access from Roughness Road. Uh, I know that, uh, traffic, the last time we spoke, was the main concern. Um, you know, we, we get it. There's, there will be a slight increase in traffic. Uh, there are, you know, multitude of ways that we can access this 14-acre area of the golf course, but we still believe that this particular route, which now is, as you can see, a, a single lane road, uh, with a mini roundabout, a small roundabout, something that could, you know, perhaps fit inside this room. With, uh, small lanes, um, it's, uh, it's offset from the center of the road. So, certainly cars are going to have to slow down to go through this roundabout. Um, you know, we thought that that might help alleviate some of the concerns that a lot of the residents had with car speeding. You know, this, the, the stop signs may not slow them down, but they're going to really have to slow down for this roundabout. And, uh, you know, another one of the, the things that the board brought up is, uh, well, you know, there are other options for where we could put the road to access this, you know, 14 acres. So, we, you know, examined what we're proposing versus other potential uh, means of egress and ingress. And, um, one of the ways that we could come in is there is a paper street, uh, off of, uh, Roughness Road, basically on the other side of Mountain View. You know, that's not something we're looking to do. And there's, there's also a, uh, uh, an existing, not really a paper street, but just a, a frontage near Linwood Drive. And that's also something that we explored at the previous meeting. And something that we don't want to do just due to the grades. You know, we don't want to make a road that's, that's like Story Avenue, super steep. Um, and basically, the, coming in off of, uh, the paper street by Mountain View Avenue is really going to be no different than this, essentially. Uh, you're just putting it on the other side of, of, of Mountain View. Um, so the exhibits that we provided for you this evening were concepts that were brought up for a, a through road, uh, connecting other frontages on the golf course to, uh, South Country Club Drive and Row Road. That's also something that we don't want to do. It's going to result in a significantly larger, uh, amount of disturbance. Um, and you know, you, you had someone on the phone over there from Row Road. Maybe they saw this exhibit and they thought, oh, you know, we, we bought a house at a dead end on Row Road. We don't want a road in there and we don't want to put one there. Um, you know, there, there's a mul-, uh, I'll say it again. There's a multitude of ways that we can access this parcel and it's going to be tough to please everybody. We don't want to make a, a through road, certainly, to have another situation like this where you now are introducing all kinds of traffic into the country club neighborhood from not only our neighborhood, but people on McGovern, Hilltop, et cetera. And the reverse of people going through and up to Row Road. Now, this is going to be a dead end. It's going to be the least amount of impact possible. So, that's the way that we would like to see it.
So, one of the questions I have, it, so you talked about Row Road, uh, you know, X, X, as an access point and also, I guess, it's South Country Club Drive, right?
Right.
And, and if you were to utilize those versus the, uh, Boulevard and the, and the rotary at, uh, Roughness, um, basically it would be a, a new, uh, connector, right, for, for all the traffic to come through this new development, right? But one thing you haven't said is, what about if you, you know, the different options? What if you just did Roughness and then just had an emergency exit along, uh, the Boulevard where the houses? Or if you only use South Country Club and had an emergency exit, uh, you know, because of our concerns about, you know, isolation of the, uh, the location? Have you evaluate, you know, all the different, you know, scenarios that are out there?
Um, yeah, and then basically, you're going to wind up with the same scenario that you have here. Uh, you're, you're just going to have the people from South Country Club Drive and East Country Club Drive coming in and saying, we don't want a road there.
I think those roads are narrower.
And the roads are narrower there as well. There's a lot more houses that are going to be affected there than there are on Roughness.
Where was the paper street? Was on?
Paper street is, uh, right there. That's where we're proposing the, um, the walking path. That's something else I forgot to mention is that with this submission, we are proposing to provide a walking path that's going to give a connector through that paper street, um, from the Country Club Drive neighborhood.
Chairman, respectfully, um, coming off of Row or coming off of East Country Club Drive is not taking a single family home down. So, there is a difference when you're looking at those two there.
Yep, and we did see the traffic study and we will have a TDE. It's in the, you're currently looking for a TD independent, independently verified the traffic study, but
Yes.
as I discussed with you, Mr. Kimmer, Dave, when we were talking at the, uh, sidewalk, that we, we could reconfigure Row and Country Club as just entry and egress points to the development, right? Instead of a really a through road, right? There's signage, et cetera, that could do that.
Well, I, I, we don't want to make it a gated community.
Well, I mean, I think that having it in a state like that is, you know, as I've told you in the first meeting, it's a very weighty decision for this board to accept tearing down a house and putting in a road.
Well, and, okay, and you know, I understand that there is a difference between a paper street and demolishing a house. You know, I get it, nobody wants to see a house demolished. But in effect, what they're doing could be accomplished and would, uh, result in something that's no different than this access over on Linwood Drive. If they wanted to, they could get a demo permit, demolish the house, you know, grade it, seed it, just make it a long, essentially, and then combine the two parcels. And then, that's, you, you have the same exact piece of land that you've got there on Linwood.
Well, we, I mean, we're, you'll come in front of the board and we'll take it one step at a time.
I, it's, um,
Right?
Right, but.
I mean, actually, look, what you're summarizing, to some extent, reflects what the community said, that there's actually really no good way to get to this property that doesn't negatively impact the entire surrounding neighborhood.
Well.
And so, maybe, maybe this development is really not a wise development.
Can I, or can I add?
Yeah, I'm done.
So, you had mentioned there were a multitude of options, right, earlier?
Right.
And I know there's a finite number of, of options, but you did seem to imply that there were quite a few that were considered. Um, we're not here to design your project, obviously, right? We're looking at what you're presenting to us. But I liked what you said when you had indicated that we don't want to create another pass-through, another Roughness Road. Um, it would be helpful if there was another Rough, Roughness Road because it might offset some of the traffic that's on Roughness. Roughness is doing its job, you know, as all the streets around Roughness do. You know, Row Road, anyone who lives on any of those streets ought not mow their lawn without looking around them. Like that is just the nature of our neighborhood. But I did like when you said you don't want to create another cut-through. Was there a design that you came up with in the multitude that didn't put an access road or a cut-through on these neighboring streets?
No. There's really no other option. I mean, a subdivision has to come in somewhere.
But the multitude is what I was referring to, like Balltown Road, Union Street, the entrance of the Mohawk Club, as opposed to, you know, these other ones you've, you've got designed. I'm just curious if multitude included those?
It did not. I, I mean, you're not going to build a road that's half a mile long to get to 22 houses.
Well, you can build one that's 22 feet long. Um, I just was curious if it came up. I mean, that, that was, your point on not making another cut-through or, you know, connecting, I think is a, is a very valid one. And I also think it's valid to, to mitigate the cut-through potential by having a stub off or create a new neighborhood off of a, an area that unfortunately is a home now. But that makes sense. It does minimize the cut-through. Only people going to that destination and leaving that destination are going to be hitting Roughness. Whereas if you have a cut-through, you may get two, three times that many people, right? So, I love the, the concept of that. Um, but I just was curious if you could give us more insight on the multitude? That, that, that's all I was asking. The multitude of options that you were considering.
Yeah, so that, those options would be, like I mentioned before, off Linwood, off the paper street on the other side of Mountain View Avenue, off of the frontage on East Country Club Drive or the dead end on Row Road.
Yeah.
Can I just say something? Um,
Here.
Oh, are you guys?
I think I'm working, okay, I'm working. Um, I have a great respect for the work that you do. So, I, kudos to you for the work that you do. But you could see around you, you have a lot of people here. And they've grown from the last several meetings since I've been attending as well. Um, there's got to be another way. There's got to be another way into this. And, and just because you can, doesn't mean you should. Right? I'm not, I, I respect what you do, I do. But I do have to say that, yeah, does anyone want to travel all the way down Balltown or all the way from Union Street to this project? Maybe they do. If it's that great of a project, maybe they do. Maybe the Mohawk Club can find some other development opportunities within the golf club to make it worth traveling that far to go in. I, I just, ideas just spitting out there. I just, I just see that even if we did, even if we did change the access to a different road, you are going to see a bunch of other people come in here from another road and say, hey, you just kicked the can down the road to somebody else. We don't want this either. And we have to respect them. You know, they're, they're the residents too, that we have to respect them. I just, ultimately, again, I know that there's been lots of time and money put into this, but again, just because you can, doesn't always mean you should. So, thank you.
All right, I think it's on now. All right, perfect. So, my question is, have you had any discussions with the local fire departments in Niskuna District One or Niskuna District Two? Um, two things you said that, you know, got my spidey senses up where you said that there is going to be small, it's a small circle and there's going to be, uh, gradation issues like you have on Story Ave. Are our local fire departments going to be able to get their, their trucks through small circles or even up steep hills or down steep hills? I know Story Ave is a huge issue for Niskuna District One. And as a member of Niskuna District Two, we just got a new rescue that we can barely even get around the River Road circle. So, if you have an even smaller circle of that, are you basically creating a development that's going to be isolated from emergency services and with a lot of new developments? Is it going to be something that if it catches fire, there's not much time and you can't get the, the emergency vehicles up there? We have hills in Niskuna that the fire department has to stay at the end of the hill and, you know, bring hose up there. Is that going to be an issue here? That's my first question. My second question is, have you talked to the local schools? Again, buses, Story Ave's an issue. Um, the roundabouts can be issues. Are whatever possible means of transportation going to allow for our different forms of transportation in the community?
Well, let me start by saying this, uh, I'm sorry if this maybe was confusing, but the, the route that would have been in Steven's Story Ave is something that we're not proposing. That's something we don't want to do. So, that's not going to be an issue. The size of the roundabout, we wanted to make it as small as possible just to have the largest kind of traffic calming effect. Uh, obviously, like Chairman said, we haven't done the, all the engineering details on the roundabout. Um, but there's a lot of ways you can build these roundabouts. You can build them with mountable curbs so that there would be no issue with a fire truck getting into this, um, into the roundabout. The radius of, of the road is to town standards, the width of the rotor to town standards. You know, we don't see any issues with that. Uh, to answer your second question, no, we haven't talked to the schools. It's not something that's typically done, uh, when you're designing a subdivision. That's something that, a directive that would come from the town board, you know, issuing some kind of moratorium on development, which is not in place.
Plus, part of the process is we always send it out to the police and fire chiefs. So, the applicable fire district further review all the time. So,
I think
The police haven't gotten there yet because, again, this is concepts we're working through.
I think, Joseph, you're, Mr. Resher is referring to actually buses being able to navigate the circle, correct?
Correct, one of the issues, yes.
Yep. Actually, Laura and Elena, I, I have a little of a, um, semi-legal question, which is that, as Laura clearly articulated, this is a two-part process, the average density development. We are going to, this, the planning board looks at all issues related to the site and everything associated with the site plan to make that recommendation to the town. But when I look at the conditions that the town has to consider, there is one item there in the code under standards for granting special use permits, which at the end of a very long list of things that the town board looks at, there is a comment that says, and as to street capacity and use, that in the opinion of the board, may be necessary to safeguard public health and convenience and as may be required for the preservation of the general character of the neighborhood in which such use, building structures, et cetera, to be placed. To what extent can a planning board member, knowing that the town board is going to have to consider something like this, weigh this into our decision-making for a recommendation?
If you have a quick opinion on it, I can say what I think.
I mean, my legal opinion is that it's in our code that the town board is to consider it and making their determination and that this board is making a recommendation to the town board, that this board should be able to inquire or ascertain or make whatever judgments and assessments that it needs to in order to make a proper recommendation to the town board.
Thank you.
That would, that would be my, that would be my recommendation as well, um, that you would both recommend on the average density development and the special use permit. Although really, the average density develop, I mean, the subdivision comes back to you, but.
Yep.
Um, I don't know how others feel about it. But for me, the little roundabout rotary, whatever we're calling it today, to me, is something I just cannot support. I think it's far more intrusive than the original proposal.
And again, I think you state this, your, your thought process was, you, you've come to meetings, you've heard the public, you're concerned with speeding and you're trying to, you know, to do a traffic calming measure, which roundabouts can be considered traffic calming. So, you were trying to, to help out.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, but I do think it's more intrusive.
So, just to let the, you know, everybody know, the planning department and some board members did meet last Thursday. We did walk and actually rode through, uh, the golf course. We looked at the development. We went up to, um, the street. We looked at, you know, where the paper street is, where the proposed access point is off the road. So, doing the site visit actually is helpful for us as a board. We can relay those, relay, relay that information back to the other board members with some of our observations that we have. And I'll just go back and say something that I've said before, is that we have a couple of opportunities to be, to be reviewed where there is a paper street that really, I don't think has been significantly vetted as an access point. And also where East Country Club Drive connects, where there's a gate right by the cart path, um, by Hole 11. I, I think fundamentally, the issue is, is that access points there are going to significantly affect the, the end of Hole 11. It's going to shorten the hole potentially. Um, but I think that if you're going to look at, you know, where the access points are, we should we should at least see that plan to determine if it's a negative or a positive aspect. And I think, like you did on some of your original plans where we had the big race loop that came in, you know, this one here, at least that has the cul-de-sacs, looks to be a little bit more planned out better. You know, there were definite pros and cons to each of these plans. I think as a board member, I would like to see those access points there. And if it does affect Hole 11, then we should see what it looks like. And I know that that may come with a significant impact to course ratings. It is a tight course. We, you know, we got a really good review of the members that were there representing the board and also the groundskeeper that was there, pointing out, you know, different areas of where we were looking at that. But still, I think that there's a couple of access points that should be vetted out a little bit more. And if that's something that you don't want to do, that's great, that's your prerogative. If you want to move forward with the removal of the house, there's a lot of stuff in the current comprehensive plan that doesn't support that.
Mr. Kimmer, do you mind taking those, putting those down so the people can see us? Because everything's up on the screen over here anyway, that are on those storyboards. Thank you. Thanks. So what else from the walkthrough? Anything else you could share, those that I wasn't able to attend?
Well, I mean, one of the first things that stepped out actually is the fact that, you know, the ground and the soil is extremely wet.
The time of year.
And this time of year, that's expected. You know, David and I were talking that we'd probably recommend within another, what, two months maybe? Or one month, another water table study?
Right, that'll be probably part of the TDE that comes with it, which would be a standard practice. You know, this area does, you know, slope away from the street. It is, if you look at the contours, it is collectively showing what I think is properly. The retention basin that was added at 14 does look like it's done a significant improvement at that north end of the property. So again, we walked up to 14, went up, you know, to where the street is. You can see where the stop sign is at the end of the street. It's very steep there. And I don't disagree. I don't think it's going to be a steepest story. But, you know, that, a potential, a potential connection point there didn't really seem practical for a lot of reasons. It would significantly change the top of the street, the access point. The hole would have to be completely redone, and there's a retention basin right there. So even though one of the solutions does have a secondary egress that can go, correct, right there. Perfect. Go back one.
Oh, did I?
Yeah. Yeah, just go back one. But there's a, no, the other way. But there's a secondary egress, there it is, right there, that could be, that could, yes, there you go, that could go around bypassing all of that with some modifications to the landscape that was there, but not a significant impact to get a secondary means of egress, which I think would be much more suitable for emergency access vehicles.
So that's our emergency access.
Correct.
Road that we're proposing to.
Correct. As the second, as the second, which I think may add some merit to it. But I think other than that, you know, observations, it just happened to be a balmy wet day in January.
I do like the average density approach. I think that's a good way to go.
And.
A mix of single-family detached.
We think so too. I mean, we're trying to minimize disturbance as much as possible. I guess unfortunately, this is where, having this road where it is minimizes the disturbance to the land at least.
Yeah, but that's the.
Yeah, I mean, I know you mentioned, I just mentioned that, you know, the different options, right? As David said, coming in off of, is it East Country Club, right? Or South Country Club, I guess, where they kind of tie together there. You say you just don't want to do that. It would be nice to have a table or something. Because I love tables. It says, here's all the different options, and why it doesn't.
I mean, that's what we tried to.
Yeah, I understand. But I, you know, to David's point is, you know, there's always going to be somebody that's not going to be happy, right? Because now if you move the access point from off of Roughner over to that location, you know, which I understand, but I think we need to evaluate those pros and cons to that. And then, you know, not tear down the house and not have access that way. I think we at least need to add that evaluation and what it would look like in order to make our recommendation, you know?
I mean, with all due respect, that's what we've submitted. We've, with, with the last meeting, we submitted a plan with the access off the Paper Street and showing the access off of Linwood. And now we've shown the other two, basically.
So what were your concerns with off of Country Club?
Off of Country Club, just you're going to bring, you're going to affect more homes on Country Club Drive than you will on Roughner. I mean, we're not changing the amount of homes that we're planning to develop. We're just changing where we're going to put the traffic. And those roads are narrower. You've got more homes. It just doesn't make sense. And you have to cut through the golf course. You have to disturb more land. Granted, not woods.
But that's, that's, those are key points. That's, you know.
But that's, yeah.
Because obviously, you know, again, developer, as you know, following our code, you have rights also, and that's what we're doing. We're working through it. And if we get to a point where we disagree, then we'll have to make a recommendation on where we're at.
Yeah. I mean, in my opinion, I think we've explored all the options other than, you know, building a half mile, three quarter mile road through the golf course to access 22 homes, which it's not going to happen.
How about long-range plan? We heard from the community tonight, some concerns about long-range plan. Is there any, you know, and again, it's, the golf club is owned R1 residential, just in case anybody didn't know that. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to even utilize the code to get us this far with an average density development. So this is all allowed by code, right?
Yeah. I mean, the entire golf course could theoretically be turned into a neighborhood that looks exactly like Roughner Road and Rao Road, but that is not the plan. You know, the golf course, it's been around for over 100 years. They're not looking to get rid of it.
Yeah. Is there any benefit of coming off of Balltown Road, even though I know it'd be expensive at this time to reach this location on the site? But for, you know, future development, that might benefit without impacting?
Future development in the golf.
Yeah, I'm not promoting future development.
And also, that's why we have left a 60-foot right away on the, at the end of the cul-de-sac, so that if we do need, if they, if there ever is future development, it can happen. And you don't have this situation where you're just kind of cutting out little pieces and seeing, you know, 10 of these all the way around the golf course. You're going to get a cohesive community.
Yeah. And the reason I ask is we heard it from, you know, people tonight, so.
But, but no, there is no plan to chop up the entire golf course and turn it into a, a single-family network of streets.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board Members, Bill Sweet, Mohawk Golf Club. Just to correct a couple of points that were mentioned by the public, the entire property is 190 acres, not 120, just for the record. We've currently, in the past three years, invested millions of dollars in new swimming pool, new pool, cabana, the new maintenance building that I happened to show our two esteemed members that joined us the other day. That's a $2.5 million investment. So the club is not in financial hardship. The new owner is doing just fine. We've been in business since 1898, been in this location since 1922. There's no plans to, you know, abandon the golf course operation. As far as putting public streets through the golf course, that creates a tremendous liability issue for the golf club. To put a town road with public traffic through a golf course where we've got members playing golf, really would be very short-sighted. I did meet with the fire chief in relation to the maintenance building to address your concerns. The largest truck is the ladder truck, and it's 75,000 pounds. So we've planned to, to design and identify that emergency access road off of Rao to be able to take those kind of loads. The turning movements will be calculated by ABD, as we do with all turning movements going in and out of subdivision. So the roundabout will not be an issue, and it will be demountable. So in the event that someone does have to drive over it, whether it be a school bus to get around something or a fire truck to get around something, they'll be able to do that. To David's point, if you start to look at the traffic impacts it would be created for through traffic coming either from Rao Road or Country Club, it would create, I think, to be a greater impact, a negative impact on those existing neighbors than the 22 homes would utilizing Roughner Road. And, you know, we've done the studies. We've looked at it. David's submitted traffic counts for us now. I think it's important to just identify, you know, we see the foot traffic, the stroller traffic, the dog walking on Saturday morning on Country Club Drive. And it's, they're narrower streets. There's a lot of activity there. And I think it would be a real problem. I think it would be a hardship for that neighborhood. And all we're doing then is displacing it. So we don't want it on Roughner Road, so let's put it on Country Club Drive. The other thing we will look at, and I'll commit to this, is we will take a look at that existing Paper Street. I did point out to the, to our other planning board members that attended the other day, the separation between those two houses is less than the separation we will have when we demolish 1245. The separation between the two houses, if we demolish 1245, will be a greater separation and a greater setback off the road than if we use the existing 60-foot right away that's the Paper Street now. And that would also then force us to put a public road on golf course property. And again, that's going to be a liability issue that we have to deal with, and that's something that isn't acceptable. So I hope that helps clarify.
Yep. Mr. Sweet, thanks for the summary. And one, you know, I had asked the planning department to ask this question, but I haven't seen it responded yet, so I'll ask you while we're here. Can you summarize when the golf course was actually reconstructed and touched in past history?
Never. Just except for ongoing tree pruning, clearing, planting of fescue. It was designed by a world-class golf course architect, Debra O'Emmett. He's done other golf courses like Congressional in Washington and other really famous golf courses all over the country. That layout has been the same since he designed it. And Jim Thompson, who was a golf course pro at that time and also an architect, built it. So 1922, it has not been adjusted. And our intention is not to adjust it.
So there's been no, since 1922, there's been no adjustments?
Outside of maybe adding a tee box. But the basic hole layouts, we've got a schematic up. And there's one from 1924, I believe, and one from 1935. It shows the golf course layout exactly as it is right now, with the exception of being maybe a new tee box or some rough areas expanded. The other thing we've tried to do is go back and recreate the exact green dimensions and tee box dimensions that were built in 1922. So we're trying to go back to restore it even more accurately to what it was originally.
Okay, thank you. Look, I just have to say again, when Dave Kimmer, when Mr. Kimmer started talking, and also when you've talked, that that part of the code that I cited, right? It's, it's becoming very difficult to see how this location works. It's going to be just a matter of pushing harm of some level, and our goal would be to minimize that harm onto the existing neighbors.
Isn't that the case most of the time with new residential subdivisions? Aren't there always objections about ingress, egress, and access?
Correct, but in.
Why is this any different than any other subdivision?
Because.
14 acres, and it's a right to develop it.
Right. So to the point that was made earlier, and again, we got the traffic numbers. We'll have the TD look at it, right? I know as a board member, and I'll speak for myself here, I don't have a full understanding of actually what all of your options are. And we've asked other developers to do that in the past. So I want to find out where the minimum harm is to the neighborhood surrounding the boundary from Union to Rao, Roughner, to Balltown.
Well, I will tell you, based on previous experience with Region 4 DOT, we're not going to get a curb cut on Balltown Road.
Understood.
Years ago, the house on the corner, Mr. Cushing's house, was available. And we were looking at that as a way to create another access. And DOT flat out said, we won't even consider a meeting to do that. So you take Balltown Road off the table. I seriously doubt that they're going to allow any additional access off of Union Street, which is also a state-controlled roadway. So then we're back to the options that we've already exhibited, which are to drive traffic through Country Club or through Rao Road, which then is going to be feeders for traffic moving north and south using those connector roads.
Right. Or in light of the special use criteria, the development doesn't make sense at all.
Well, I would disagree, because we have two access points on Roughner Road that could work. We have a Paper Street, and there's nothing that prevents us from demolishing a house to create a street, other than maybe the disdain for doing it. But I don't know that there's anything in the codes that says we can't demolish a house to build a road.
Well, there is a precedent that this board would be concerned with setting.
A precedent?
Which is, which is part of how we operate.
I understand. But it's not denied by code. It's a precedent you're concerned about.
That's right, because we're also governed by, we're also, we also follow a comprehensive plan.
I understand.
If you can bear with me a moment, you know, we keep talking about Rao Road and Country Club in the context that it would be, to connect it and would be a street through. So it would be a new thoroughfare through the property and everything. Again, what I was trying to say is, what if it was, you know, this development, I think you've said it, it's 22 units, right? The numbers are pretty low from traffic standpoint. From, you know, I've been doing this a long time, right? I mean, they're textbook numbers, right? Well, what if you just came off of Country Club and out to Rao Road was, or not to Rao, or out to Roughner, was, it was basically just a grass mat, you know, and not a road to go into there?
Yeah. I think, I think we're all in pretty much agreement that Rao Road makes sense for the emergency access. The issue I've got with Country Club is putting a public town road on private property and a liability that that would bring to the golf course.
But that's the point I was making earlier, right? It could look like a through road for emergency access, but.
No, what Chairman's suggesting is that Country Club becomes the permanent access.
Yeah, Country Club would be the.
So that's one version, right?
Rao Road.
But that then pushes a public road onto private.
Or the other version is, you have the entrance to your property off of Country Club. And that's an entrance to egress.
That's what we're talking about.
Yes, we're talking about.
But it not be a public road?
Well, we want it to be a public road. We're going to build it to town spec, and we're going to dedicate it.
Right. But when we have subdivisions and a road goes through, gets dedicated to town, why is this any different, you know?
Because it's going to be crossing privately-owned golf course property to be bifurcating golf course property to put the town road in.
I mean, the issue is that it's golf course property, right? We're clear, right? You don't want to touch the golf course.
Well, and there's a liability issue.
Well, couldn't that, couldn't that little leg be chopped out to make that part of the development? And it gets turned over? I don't understand, I guess.
Well, part of it would probably necessitate, and we'll go back and graphically look at that, coming in off the Paper Street. And we'll plot the dimension, the differential between the two Paper Street access points, 1245 and the Paper Street. But it would probably require that we have to reconfigure Hole 11, which is something that hasn't been touched since it was built. Excuse me?
Yeah, yeah, let's please, we need to be respectful of each other and not shout out comments, please.
So to, so just to recap one of my comments from earlier, what we saw were just red lines of the Paper Street connecting to the development. We didn't see a full-blown plan like you have here. I think that's what we're alluding to. We would, we would, we would, graphically, we would like to see that. And from that full exercise of the design development, that will tell us if there is an issue with turning radiuses and/or access points or whatever it is that may not work from a vehicular standpoint. But again, on there, you can also delineate where your property line is and how much that's going to affect the 11th tee. We should see that.
Right. I can just tell you that. Sorry. What was provided on the red lines, you know, it is red, but it was drawn to town standards. That right away that you see in red is a town standard right away. You know, I could, I could go back and make it not red, but it will be the exact same line work.
Can you pull that one up, Laura?
Yeah.
Agreed, but it didn't connect into the development, which would then reconfigure where your.
Where everything's placed, right?
I suppose. No, I understand that. I understand that, but.
I understand. We'll enhance graphically two access points, the existing Paper Street and Country Club Drive. Are we all in agreement that the Rao Road design meets the emergency access, and that's acceptable the way we've, we've shown that?
We can't comment on that until we have a TDE look, but I don't think the board's asking.
Is there any more enhancement? I'll rephrase it. Is there any more enhancement you would need on the Rao Road schematic than we currently present it?
This is, again, that's a, that's an emergency access.
Correct. Correct.
I mean, I would recommend that we see a full-blown rendition from the Rao Road side as well. I would recommend that you do that.
Well, that again, would put, again, public, public road on, it would bifurcate, it would bisect. Well, that again would put, again, public, public road on, it would bifurcate, it would bisect a whole on a golf course.
So I, yeah, I mean, we understand that's a hardship, but actually because
It's not a hardship, Laura, it's a liability.
Well, I know, Bill, but
You've got guys on the 14th tee, they hit a drive and they put it through the window of a car.
Well, can you please let me finish, though, because the planning department has been working on a lot of comments that have come in. We've been working, you know, we know that this is potentially going to the town board, they've had a lot of questions. And so we've actually even researched whether or not public streets can occur through golf courses. And we have a couple of examples of where they do. So I understand that it's not ideal, but it certainly has happened. And I mean, your balance is this is not good for our golf course, but I think it's good for the planning board to see all the options. And that's good is, I mean, eventually you have to review the environmental impact statements, you need to look at all those alternatives. And I mean, there's got to be ways to do it because it has been done.
Well, and I will also, having been a golfer for a number of years and played a lot of the golf courses around the Northeast, most of those public thoroughfares, town roads are on public golf courses, they're not on private golf courses.
Yeah.
And that's a point of clarification.
There's, I mean, I can, there's a, I don't, I think there's one even, maybe it's a public one in Wilton that has roads that go right through it.
That would be McGregor, and that's public.
And that's a public one.
But as an emergency access, you're not worried about the liability, or it's not the same liability?
No, because it wouldn't be constant traffic. Put in a breakaway barrier.
Yep.
I would still recommend that we see it as
Yeah, no, definitely. And I mean, there's two aspects, right? One is ownership and liability, private versus public. And the other one is, does it work? Does it work from a site perspective? Right? And again, you know, minimizing the, the harm to the surrounding neighborhood. Okay, let me shift gears slightly. We had this before, and there was a comment on it earlier in our first, the water and sewer issue. So I know there is the detention area, maybe you can point it out, Laura, where it is. And we're going to have a TD at some point, but I think that would be post the decision from the town board, correct?
Um, no, actually, we're in the process of sending the, the project to a TDE right now. Yeah, well, I mean, the other thing that we want to do is the TDE can look at some of the things like that the applicant have presented, such as the traffic summaries. But we do need to schedule a meeting with the applicant and the engineering department, like as soon as possible. Because I, we internally circulate, circulate these drawings, and I know that they had concerns, and we've mentioned it a couple of times on capacity. So we do need to have that meeting with engineers.
And we are very well aware of the sewer issues in the town, so that obviously would be something that has to be studied. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we just recently uncovered a 16-inch water main that runs down our 14th fairway that had not been identified or described on any town maps. And we found it as part of the work we're doing with the new maintenance building. So there would be a potential tapoff of the 16, if need be, with a pressure-reducing valve, and we could bring water to the project.
Yeah, it's definitely something you have to have a meeting with the engineering
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Well, those are all engineering details that you would work through as part of any application process, so.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that it's not actually the size of the line, it's the number of units, because it's the high-pressure zone. But that's something that you have to talk to the engineering department about.
Typically, if it's a high-pressure line, you just end up putting a PRV on it, a pressure-reducing valve. So you get it down to pressures, it won't rack the plumbing in the house.
We have a 16-inch line that wasn't documented
Correct.
Functioning.
There used to be a water tower on the paper street. The, the right-of-way, I should say, not the paper street, but the right-of-way, there was a water tower off Roughner adjacent to 1245. There was also a water tower up on the fourth tee box. The 16-inch line ran to that water tower. And then from there, an eight-inch line came out, which feeds John Paul Court and Jeffrey that runs through the golf course property too. And we worked with the town water department because we were going to relocate a telephone pole. We did the underground identifications, and we found the 16-inch line and the eight-inch line, which were never a matter of record. So we now have plotted all that for the town and have marked it so that we know where those lines are.
Okay. I have one suggestion. It would make things clear for me if I had the width of the roads that these egress points would be connecting to, whether it be Country Club or
Sure.
Row or whatever.
Okay. Can do.
Mr. Sweet, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, and, and I thought I followed this closely, but maybe I missed it. What was the driving, it was my understanding that the golf club had undergone some type of financial hardship, and that's why they looked into this development. But you're saying that there is no issue financially.
There was a change in the overall structure and ownership of the club about four years ago. We were a member-owned club governed by a board of governors, members. And there were some financial issues, not unlike a lot of private clubs all over the country. And then Michael Rutherford purchased the club and the existing debt, and now he is the sole owner. And he has single-handedly been the one that's invested the millions of dollars in reconstructing the pool, the new cabana building, repaving all the parking lots, the two and a half million dollar maintenance building. So this is just maximizing the value of the 14 acres of vacant property now that's on, on the golf course.
So for the sake of argument or my nosiness, if this project didn't even happen, does that put the golf club in some type of financial jeopardy?
No.
Thank you.
And by the way, there was another comment about what's the public benefit. For those that may not know it, we allow Niskiuna Golf Club to play at no charge. We allow Union College to use Mohawk Golf Club as their home course. We allow the police and fire departments, once a year, to have their golf outings at no cost.
And that's great, but you guys are a public, you're, you're a private, you're a private club.
Right.
So it, that's wonderful that you allow those things. Those with
I think the comment was that we don't do anything for the
Understood, and, and I understand that, but I, I think that those entities probably could find something at a public club. I'm just saying, you guys have been private, I've lived in this town my entire life. You guys have been a private club forever. So it's in terms of, I mean, the, the most benefit I remember is ice skating on your pond
On the 10th pond, yeah.
But other than that, I see all of those other entities that could find other places. No disrespect to you, but you've got a lot of surrounding people around you, that's all. I just want to reiterate that. We are, you know, as a board, I know that we are, it's incumbent on us to enforce our, our laws. And that's, that's where we are. But you can't help but have feelings and sympathy and empathy and understanding for what these folks are going through.
Absolutely.
Watching stuff come through, some people are notified, some people are not, some people are in the dark for a long period of time. So, you know, and then we get people that come in here and tell us we're corrupt. You know, a little frustrating, so we appreciate you feeling our questions.
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks. Yeah, look, and, and I can assure you, you've known this board for a while about the public, right? We, we go by what we're allowed to do, what is legal, what's in the code, right? And, you know, that's why I know, you know, I've talked with Laura, looked it all over myself for like the, you know, bazillion time being on the board for as long as I have. This is very unique and this is very difficult. And there are precedences that present themselves here that we, that give me a lot of pause. Right? We, we had a situation once where we, you know, the planning board, you know, ended up recommending something that was ending up being okay with the recommendation against a comprehensive plan because of just the traffic impact. Right? That was the main factor, happened during the middle of COVID, we did that, and we did something that none of us liked, which was accept that data, right? And allowed, and allowed a neighborhood to become isolated where a comprehensive plan would have had connected. And that, again, it was another average of agency development, but remember, there's an elected board involved in this, and so we can only make a recommendation. All right, so the point is, is that we're going to do our best, stick to the code, stick to the average of agency development, stick to the process, and make our determination that way, but this is not an easy project.
I understand. And again, it's, it's weighing private property rights versus comprehensive plan versus neighborhood perspective.
Which are the factors that are there for every single project that comes like this in front of us? Like you've said.
Yeah.
Given that, this is in the category of one of the most difficult.
Understand. Well, we'll try to make it easier with some of the graphic enhancement that we can do to show the width of the roads, the other access points, and then come back and evaluate again.
Yeah, all the different scenarios and why they don't work or why this is the best
Can do.
And, you know, the other new information we got was the traffic, are we planning on talking about that, just summarizing the traffic?
Again, as, as the board is aware, a 22-lot subdivision is small in comparison to a lot of things that have been built in the town as of late. David, I thought, did a pretty good job in, in using the typical tables and historical data to calculate those trips that would be generated. Again, if we can get the TDE on board, I have no issue with them evaluating the work that ABD did and putting those traffic numbers together. And then determining if there really is a significant impact with 60 to 80 new trips a day. Given the number of trips that currently exist on Roughner Road. And again, I want to restate, and, and David touched on it. We committed at our first meeting at the golf club at being champions for the neighborhood and trying to come up with a solution to calm and slow down the traffic on Roughner Road. We know how bad it is. We see it. From the 14th tee box, I watch people blow through that stop sign every Saturday morning without even touching their brakes. So our concept was, like DOT's concept now, let's put a roundabout in, let's traffic calm and slow it down. I'm just as happy to take that off the plan. That was something we did in an effort to try to slow traffic down to meet the neighborhood concerns. So I'm very happy to take that off the plan and totally discount it.
I guess, just to add to, so I, I agree the, the private right to develop and the reason and the rationale, and I do think it would be, I don't want to sound, I don't want to put it into a corner, but it, it, it's a great neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood to add to. But the comprehensive plan is pretty clear that we want to retain and maintain the feel and the aesthetic and the history associated with this old estate. So I'm, I'm perplexed with how I can agree with the comprehensive plan while removing a, a home and putting in a roundabout. So you're removing the roundabout. I mean, I personally love roundabouts, they're great. But I don't think they're pedestrian-friendly, and knowing, being a member of that community, most of the time I'm walking, I'm going to still be paying super attention, and if I have to walk in a little bit to cross a roundabout, I'm still going to be paying super attention. I just don't think they're pedestrian-friendly.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm in total agreement. And again, it was just our attempt.
No, I get it, but, but they are, they are definitely traffic calming, without, without question. To your point, no one's running right through the circle, they're going to, I have to stop halfway now, you know? So I do think it will calm that, but I just don't think they're pedestrian-friendly. So my point is, I'm having the most difficult time preserving the aesthetic of the neighborhood and approving this plan if it comes to that point because of the circle and because of taking down the house and changing that corner and all that. It really changes the look of it a lot. But without the circle, it's a little bit better, but I'm still having a difficult time with the house. That's just a difficult, I know that you had very limited options. I know as a grantor of that land, you have the right to do that. It's, that's the part that's, in, when you read the comprehensive plan, that, that's the part that I'm having the most difficult time with.
Yeah. Well, a couple of thoughts, that was the reason that we wanted to maintain the 50-foot buffer and leave that completely treed. Our intention is not to clear cut the 14 acres, it's to selectively clear, keep the healthy hardwood deciduous trees. There's a lot of scrub, guys saw it when they were out there the other day, that we certainly can clean up without changing the, the character. But keeping that 50-foot buffer from the backyards of all the homes on Roughner Road is going to look pretty much like it does right now. And there will be houses between that tree line and the golf course, obviously.
I agree with everything you said, and I know that you're going to pay attention to that. I mean, this golf course is why we have the wildlife that we have in, in many ways, right? To see, to see it completely developed would be tough, and I wanted to, to challenge the board with, we should be thinking that way. We have no idea what the next owner's going to do three years from now. But I do like the fact that you've pointed out the investment that has been made to keep it a golf course, right? With all that being said, though, I just, it's tearing down the house, the buffers, all that is great. That's the part that I'm struggling with. I don't know if that's going to help you at all, but I think all of us are going to be struggling with that piece.
And again, that's why we'll look at this existing 60-foot right-of-way, which has two houses closer, as I mentioned, that would, by tearing the house down. But that would be a legitimate access point that we'll graphically, we'll put it on paper and take a look at. But that would impact the 11th green at the golf course. Whereas this one wouldn't impact anything on the golf course, to David's point, less disturbance there than bringing the street in off of 1245.
Actually, as of today, is the golf course, what's the name, what's the official corporate name of the golf course?
Mohawk Golf Operations LLC.
Okay, are they in possession of 1245 Roughner?
No, that's in the name of our general manager at the club, who happens to be Mike Rutherford's son-in-law.
Okay, so
He took title in his name.
So, so, so at what point are you going to actually purchase that? Is the golf course LLC?
It's just going to be a D transfer. And that would be part of the subdivision. We would sub, reverse subdivision, we'd, we'd roll that in and re-describe the entire parcel.
Dave, can you take that thing down?
Sorry. But it's a related, related party.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
So I think the immediate next step is, from the applicant's side, it's really a more detailed understanding of egress. Yep.
The only other comment I had on that is that there were, I know several comments about what the future plans would be for the golf course and the loss of wild space, which also came up at the Conservation Advisory Council meeting. So it may be worth it to continue to explore some of those D restrictions that we had talked about and kind of formalize those areas to show that that you're working with not fully developing
Yeah, that was something that we discussed at the CAC meeting, and we do have some lands to the right side of the fifth tee box that back up to John Paul Court that we could never gain access to and we would never develop. So that would be an area that we could probably set aside as forever wild. The other thing, and I've mentioned it before, we subscribe to the Autobahn Society's golf course management standards. And so we're preserving and creating sanctuaries and wildlife areas throughout the golf course. That 14 acres, quite honestly, isn't really the habitat to most of the wildlife that's on the golf course. It's more interior to the golf course and the reservoir. There are a lot of deer that camp out at the reservoir and jump over the fence onto our sixth fairway. But we've still got hawks flying around all the time and the, and the coyotes and the foxes and, you know, there, there's plenty of other woods and, and areas on the 190 acres. And very, very little habitation in that 14 acres.
Yeah, but I think showing the willingness to protect that, especially like with the pressures of, I've said it before, I really think that a long-term plan for the golf course would be very helpful. I know this board has asked before, like, is this the only piece that you're looking at developing? And I know that sometimes you have that potential other side. I think it would be very helpful to put all the pieces together on a single page and be like, you know, really, what is the maximum build-out? What could you potentially be looking at? Where would all those access work? And is there another place that you could put this? Like, I heard the gentleman say it, I actually had a similar idea, I talked to, is there, is there a possibility of actually making this a hole and then moving this development close to the
We're not going to redesign the golf course.
To the, to the
That, that's a firm point.
Yeah.
It's a layout and a design that stood the test of time.
Yeah.
And we're not going to change the layout. As I've explained in previous meetings, we're 190 acres, which includes parking areas, the swimming pool, tennis courts, the driving range, the par three golf course. We don't have a lot of flexibility as far as other areas to develop.
Yeah.
We can carve out that, that piece of forever wild along the fifth hole.
Yeah, I'm not an expert on golf courses. Look, like, you know, you have the driving range. I don't know how much land you need for the driving range.
We need more than we've actually got. We're going to look at reconfiguring that and taking maybe a hole or two out of the par three golf course to expand.
The driving range, because, yeah, because the advantage of putting townhomes next to the driving range is that they're all clustered kind of at the front.
We wouldn't, the, the basic area doesn't exist, Laura.
Yeah.
There's not 14 acres there.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just, I'm a planner, right? So like what I will always want to recommend and see in environmental impact statement and any kind of plans that come forth with the planning board, or what are, are the alternatives? Just, you know, on a big plan, I think it would just be helpful because, you know, it's, I think that a lot of us feel like, okay, we're just locked in on these, on this 14 acres in this one, you know, home. And it's like, well, have we really looked at every other option that we could possibly look at for this property?
Yeah, because from a long-term perspective, it's going to remain a golf course.
Which is great to hear. I know that we really want it to stay a golf course in the long term. It's a, even though it's private, I think it's a huge asset to the town to have It's a, even though it's private, I think it's a huge asset to the town to have.
Yeah. So I do want to reiterate what Laura's saying about all the options because, I mean, maybe you guys have looked at it, but I don't, I know I haven't seen it, number one. And number two, I'm actually thinking that what's getting raised here is that even if this development were to go through and something where it minimizes the harm to the surrounding neighborhood, we might want to deed restrict the entire property.
Well, we might want to request it.
Yep.
That will not happen.
Yeah.
Well, you know, an option is, an option is that the development doesn't happen.
Well, I understand.
Right.
And that would be the, the situation you would force us into.
Right.
It's an ongoing business operation. To deed restrict the business operation? That, that's very short sighted on the owner's part to even accept or consider that.
Well, we want that golf course to be there for another century.
Understand, but financial situations change and dictate. The Edison Club is going through it right now.
Can't have it both ways. We need to make a decision for the long term of the community. Agreed? And that's a very clear decision guided by our comprehensive plan.
It's going to remain a golf course.
And guided by our code. So that's what the main consideration is that we give to it as a planning board.
I mean.
And I think, I mean, Bill, I just think it would be helpful because when you were discussing with the Conservation and that Advisory Council areas that you'd be willing to look at. And I think the idea that you had was deed restrict it for future subdivision, but not for use and change of the golf course.
Yeah.
Yeah. And hatch mark out those areas.
Yeah, we've identified those and yeah, we can do that as well.
Yeah, I know we've, so seeing the comprehensive plan is not for us to redesign your design, but I think it would help us understand better how you got to your conclusions, right? That would probably be helpful. I think that's what I'm getting from what I'm looking forward to seeing if we see a holistic plan for the entire parcel, 190 acres, right? Whatever it is, with the little area that you plan on not developing, right? To keep forever wild, where that is relative to the other things that we're developing.
Well, yeah, the existing area will show the driving range and the par three, the 18 holes. I mean, there's, there's really that one area that I've referenced a couple of times now along the fifth hole and the 14 acres. Those are the only two areas of the golf course.
Is that what we're asking for?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just give the example of the, um, I think that's the next item on our agenda. We had them actually break their parking apart, like with, so he just kind of went around the, you know, parking area in color and said, here's where we, here's where the employees park. Here's where, um, you know, we're going to do our show. I think it would be helpful to, you know, kind of break the golf course apart so we can understand it as a whole. You know, like here's the driving range, here's the nine hole golf course, here's your entrance, here's this 14 acres, like, and here's the different ways that you can access it truly.
I believe you guys have a full area of course. I'd be happy to get in front of this screen.
Why don't we, we'll put some red lines on it.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah. And it's a discussion around the options, right? I mean, and I look, I know I've said a lot and we've mentioned, but again, the difficulty of, of this one. I think Mr. Sweet and for the owner, I think, I'm not sure if he's in the audience or not. But when you folks first came here, and I think you know, this is a key precedent of the planning board, we like there to be harmony between the developers and the community. At times we even promoted meetings between developers and members of the community. You folks started with that, but something seemed to have gone wrong along the way, right? And so.
As we've gotten direction from the board, we've gone back and modified our plan to make it more conforming. And that obviously doesn't get extended out to the public. And that's what I'm hearing the objection is, is that they're seeing it for the first time. Well, there is no way to communicate the revisions we've made until we have a meeting.
Yeah. The implication, the last point I'm making is that I think you still need to promote that community communication, that community harmony on your side. Right? We've, we've got radii and square footage that we need to look at when we send out public notice announcements. But at the end of the day, they're your neighbors.
Yep. Understand.
Okay. All right. Just one other point of order. Mr. McPartlin with us still? Nice, huh? Just wanted to point that Mr. McPartlin was recusing himself on this project and Mr. Drescher was filling in for him just for the record, okay?
Okay. Okay. Thank you all very much.
All right.
Cedric here.
Is it there? I just wanted to verify you were recusing yourself, right, Mr. McPartlin on the Mohawk Golf Club?
Should I be renewing my recusal each?
No, no, I just wanted to just make sure the public knew that you were recusing yourself and that Mr. Drescher was sitting in. That's all I was, that, so we're, we're good. Yep, definitely.
No, we're going to, that was agenda item number one.